How are you?
I'm good. Good to go. John. We're gonna be at John's. So it's somewhere, yeah.
This is all just an area of my leisure. So you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's just FYI. No.
Like I said, it's probably not. You know, this is good news or this is not. But that's all. Okay. And which.
I'm going to call this Bryan Independent School District meeting to order. Like the record show that a quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is now six oh two. On the extent of warm welcome to everyone present, I ask that you please turn off the sound on all electronic devices and stand for the pledges. We are going to use a recording made by MC Harris High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, under the rule of which states our nation under God and in the physical. We deliver peace and justice for all.
Moving on. Now the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to these states as our states under God and in the physical.
We now, we do have a spotlight of visual arts recognition. District of Distinction and Director of Fine Arts Jacob Justice is gonna tell us all about it.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to shine a light on our amazing art teachers. Behind me, we have some of them represented today. A hundred and nine districts in the state of Texas will receive the Texas Art Education Association District of Distinction Award for the 2024-2025 academic year. This award recognizes districts with outstanding leadership in promoting the arts in their schools and community. Bryan ISD visual arts program has exceeded the rigorous 14-point rubric that examined the district's visual arts program from participation in TAEA through membership, expeditions, contests, and community engagement in the visual arts, through field experiences, community service, and collaboration with other content areas. The selection committee was impressed and proud of Bryan ISD's level of participation in visual art learning experiences at all grade levels. For the sixth year in a row, Bryan ISD has been recognized as a district of distinction for the visual arts. We could not have done this without the support of the board and administration, our amazing schools, our phenomenal teachers, and all of our artists of every size that we have in Bryan ISD. We also are appreciative of the efforts of Ms. Terry Clark from Bonham Elementary. Terry's right here. Terry has spearheaded this process for us year after year. Thank you.
Thank you. Woo! And I just looked up to make sure I didn't get it wrong, but there, that sounds like, well, that's quite a few districts, but there are a total of over 1,200 districts in Texas. So that's really a great accomplishment. All right, well, they're wrapping that up. We're gonna move to board member reports, starting with the superintendent. Update on student and staff celebrations.
Thank you, Mr. Stasny. Even though schools are not in session, we have been busy this summer. There's still many student and staff celebrations, as you can see with the visual arts. It's my pleasure to shine a light because we continue to receive awards and recognitions all throughout this summer. On the screen before you, right now, we just had our Admin Institute, which was three days last week. This was amazing. All of our leaders from all of the campuses and departments showed up, and we rolled up our sleeves to plan out the good work ahead of us. So we are looking forward to a terrific school year. Speaking of fine arts, we just learned that Bryan ISD was awarded the Outstanding District Award for Theater. Not only did our district win this as a whole, Rayburn Intermediate School was honored as the Exemplary School for Theater Award. Davila Middle School was also honored for the Outstanding School for Theater Award. As we know from Mr. Justice sharing, this does not happen by chance. Our teachers are committed to serving and supporting our students, and we are proud to reap the benefits as these awards continue to unfold. Speaking of awards, I hope everyone noticed that the annual Eagle Newspaper Reader's Choice Award is out. And if you'll notice, Ms. Waller has a, an artifact. She's one of the, the few remaining peoples in the Brazos County that still, not only does she take the, the real paper, she clipped, cuts out the clips, puts them in an envelope, sends them to our staff members and to our students, and people look forward to opening their school district mail because they know Ms. Waller is shining a light on the good things happening. Speaking of good things, congratulations are in order. Our community has spoken, and the 2025 Best Public School in the entire community is none other than Bryan High School in Bryan ISD. Mr. Bohas is in the audience. Congratulations, Bryan High School.
Great job, Mr. Bohas. Good job.
He barely moves into town, and they're winning these awards, but you're, you're welcome for inheriting that. Congratulations to the staff and the students, the families in that community feeding that amazing school. Also, congratulations are in order for the Best Public School Teacher, Ms. Jenny Ponzio from Bonham Elementary. Again, this is a really big deal, does not happen by chance. We're so appreciative of our, of our community for recognizing the great things happening in our Bryan ISD school district. And then it is with complete gratitude that I recognize and appreciate everyone that made the Seventh Annual Hispanic Forum Scholarship Gala possible. We celebrated that night. Many of us were in attendance. There were 54 Bryan ISD students representing Bryan Collegiate High School, Bryan High School, and Rutter High School who received scholarships. And that night, over $188,000 were given out in scholarships. Some, just happens to be Bryan ISD, received up to $10,000. Remarkably, many of these students, in fact, it was noted that 58% were the first generation, first in their families to attend higher education. With 26 different universities, colleges, and trade schools, representing 40 different majors unfolding. So we are so grateful for the Hispanic Forum. It was a terrific night. In fact, it seemed like, Mr. Gonzalez, you were there, it seemed like it was more in attendance than ever.
It was past.
They maybe have outgrown the Brazos Center at this point, so, which is a good, good problem to have.
Did they say, they gave out, was it 88 scholarships? I'm forgetting, but I know, I just wanted to point out that we got the majority. I know that's what you're saying, but we got 50-something out of.
Yeah, we, yeah, Bryan ISD received 54. I believe there was 80 something total.
Eighty-eight or something like that. So really impressive of our students, and again, thanks to the Hispanic Forum as well.
Yes.
Look at them. Jade.
Jade, raise your hand. He happened to be there that night, one of the recipients.
I don't know.
Yes. Yes, so it's, it was a wonderful night because we know and love these kids, and we're so proud. And for them to receive these scholarships is just amazing. And then in addition to all of these students receiving awards, and this person happens to be in the audience with us as well, Alejandro Morales, please stand to be recognized as the recipient of the Educator of Excellence Award. Representing Rutter High School, this was a very big deal too. Again, a Bryan ISD employee receiving this kind of recognition is honestly a tremendous accomplishment for our school district. So thank you for that. And then moving on, last but not least, we have watched the new turf installation at Merrill Green Stadium. This is very exciting because the closer we get, the closer we are to Friday Night Lights. I want to give a big shout out to Mr. Joel Bryan. He had a lot of the inspiration behind some of the changes, bringing us into a more progressive time, if you will, but you'll notice the, the grass on the turf, how they have the contrasting light and dark colors and a little different logo and some different letters. And on the end zones, we're not done yet, but you'll see Vikings and Rangers painted. So really exciting. The kids who play football at both schools have told me that they've seen it. They're sneaking out there to take a look, and they're taking pictures of it. So there's a lot of really good energy right now happening because we're ready for football season, and this year it will be a new day on our brand-new turf.
Way to go, Joel. Nice.
So he has a little more experience than most of us when it comes to that and a good eye for it, so.
He's the only one that's actually been on the field.
And he may or may not have played on that field once or twice himself. So just exciting times, lots of celebrations, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. We periodically meet in committees, and Executive Board Committee consists of the officers on the board, and I think we're gonna get a report today from Ms. Benford.
Yes, so the executive board met with the administrative team, and we were given updates and briefs on the strategic planning and the bond steering. And so we're gonna wait to eagerly hear from Dr. Merle on that later in the evening.
All right, thank you. Anything else to report? Is that, okay, that covered?
That's it.
And then we have the Finance Board Committee meeting report, so I believe Mr. Gonzalez is gonna handle that.
Thank you, Mr. Stasny. We met last Tuesday and discussed compensation, and I'm gonna take the path that Ms. Benford took and allow Ms. Riddle to give us a, a full presentation of what we discussed here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, that is the next item, bond steering update, so, or that is the next item, and so I think we have a presentation by multiple folks here. If it's okay, before we get started, I know Alex is, Ms. Morales is in the stands or the audience. If we could get a picture, that would be wonderful, if you wanna come on up. I know your family's here as well. So Ms. Layton is very, very proud of the work he does, and we just wanna honor him. Thank you so much.
Could Ms. Layton elaborate a little more than I did?
Of course, yes, ma'am.
And share what he, if you wanted, just put you on the spot, just share what he actually does at Rutter?
One of the great guys, I could talk forever, but he's our emergent bilingual specialist, so he helps our ELL students, you know, as far as making sure they're getting their credits, progressing towards graduation. Honestly, I think he's sometimes just a shoulder to lean on and to talk about some of the issues, but when he came to Rutter, I just asked him, I felt like there were just some groups of kids, you know, we weren't reaching as far as programs and being involved at Rutter. And if you don't know, we had our Cinco de Mayo, where he brought, you know, dancing, and he danced, and the mariachi, and we were able to get a lot of kids involved in some programs and the students to get to see them, which is hard. And so he's done everything we ask. I think, you know, as leaders, when you get those people, you give them like their post-it note with things you need, and then he does it. And so he has been an amazing addition to Rutter High School.
And how long have you been in the district? How long have you been with us?
Wow.
Right, and you might see him on Friday nights with our kids and the film crew, and I mean, he, you ask and he'll do 10 more things along the way with it, so.
High quality.
The kids adore him. I know a lot of the students that you work with, and they absolutely love you, so thank you.
All right. All right, well, we're very excited. Thank you for not taking too much of our thunder to share a little bit of bond steering. I've got some friends behind me. We had more that represented from the 13 days that we're still all friends, which is incredible.
That's not what he said about y'all earlier, but I'm.
That's not true. That is not true.
No, it is not true.
Yeah, I am, and so what you're gonna do is see some staff members share out, and then you're gonna hear a lot from our community members. And so we're gonna walk through some process. If you'll turn down just the lights just a little so they can see it, Clay, when you get a chance. You're taking a picture, so we'll get through. Y'all have seen these slides, and I'm, I'm gonna go through pretty quickly and then turn it over to Merv. It's a comprehensive group. It represents a diverse cross-section, 13 meetings, various perspectives from the community. That was truly felt in all of the meetings. We reviewed information related to the district's facility, prioritized needs, developed a financially responsible plan. We work with the big picture. All of these things, you've seen these slides before, right? I mean, you're, you're gonna see this process play out, and, and the process was incredible. When you look at it, we came in the first few times, we conceptualized kind of what we thought it would look like, framework, some goal setting. We started exploring all of the information. We looked at the demographic study. We looked at the facility condition index, which would play a role, and I'll talk about that later if it's not brought up. We look at the financial capacity. That took three or four meetings. We looked at conceptual plans and optional bond proposals, and then reaching consensus. And so I wanted Merv to come up, just share a little bit of his experience and talk about this entire process.
Thank y'all. I think the, just for this committee, I think what the city of Bryan and Bryan ISD and our community can be proud of is anytime you guys wanna put something together, you do look for the cross-section. There is representation from every neighborhood, every school. When it came to the staff, it was, it wasn't just teachers. It was folks from transportation. It was custodial staff. Everybody was represented. We, we had, the right stakeholders were involved. Most importantly, who was involved at every meeting that, that we were at was the taxpayer in this as well and considering. So we, we would have complete transparency and everything, and I would say, I've had folks that were asking about this committee and would say, hey, all the information is available on the website. There's nothing being hidden from anybody. Everything that I get to see in a meeting, you can go onto the website and see what's going on. There's nothing that the school district is trying to hide from, from anyone here. One of the great things, I mentioned our desire to do what's right for the kids, to do what's right, not just for 2026, but 2036, as we're progressing out here, is also to make sure that we are doing what's right by the taxpayer again. In one example, we had of that, there was a list of all these different things that were needing to be done, and Bryan actually made the comment, oh, well, it looks like the committee really wasn't interested in that one. And it was, no, it's not that we're not interested in doing this, but we've gotta choose. We can't do everything. We have to prioritize the needs of the taxpayer with the needs of what's going on with BISD. So I think in, in, in this proposal that you all can be proud of and that the citizens of Bryan can be proud of what was put together because we were trying to do what's right by everybody here. I think that's all I've got, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Riddle, I'll ask you to come up and talk just a little bit about the process with MNO and those things.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I'm sure that you've heard of the famous buckets and the famous cups, hundreds and hundreds of times, but you know, I'm gonna give you one last point of clarification here. So as we know, in school finance, we have the maintenance and operations side, and we have the interest and sinking side. Our tax rate is divided into those two major segments. It is very important to note that the MNO side can only be used for day-to-day operations such as salaries, classroom supplies, utilities, transportation. The other side of the tax rate, the interest and sinking or debt service revenue, can only be used to be paid, to pay capital expenditures, land, construction, renovations, those types of assets. We are not able to be crossing pennies or swapping pennies or anything like that, so it is very important to note, we are getting this bond, we're not able to pay salaries with a bond. That is strictly for the maintenance and operations side, and we'll be looking more into that later in the evening. So again, big point of clarification, our tax rate is divided into two major segments, the MNO side and the INS side. So I think we start it with cups and then we upgrade it to buckets, so. Okay, and then moving on to our debt capacity. So of course, the question on everybody's mind at the beginning of any process is, how much can we afford, right? Money touches everything, and this adventure here is absolutely, absolutely no exception to that. This is an amazing visual, actually, now that I kinda sit back and look at it. You're able to see what our district can actually afford, and we are actually able to afford $400 million without a tax rate increase. And as I stated at our last, at one of our last bond meetings, it is absolutely a privilege and an honor for Bryan ISD to be able to have this much financial capacity. It is unheard of to be able to not raise your tax rate and have $400 million at the taxpayer's approval and ability. So everybody, all past administrations, everybody that has been here, the ones that have come before us, have put us, Bryan Independent School District, in an amazing position to be able to have this opportunity. So I just wanna say it again, we have capacity of $400 million without a single raise to our tax rate. And of course, we're gonna see that required ballot language. It's going to say, this is a property tax increase. So it's very important for our staff and our community to understand, and this was a huge education piece for us. So this is absolutely not a tax rate increase. We have bond capacity up to $400 million. So if there's, if that helps at all.
Ms. Riddle, may I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
And I've said this before, I just wanna make sure that the public understands that, like you alluded to it, we, we've worked very hard to pay, you guys, you and Mr. Beesaw, have worked very hard to put us in this position and pass boards as well. And that is the equivalent of saving, because that's what, again, I've said this before, but I just wanna make sure everybody understands that we can't just hoard cash. We can't save, Mr. Stasny's brought that up, we can't just save money to build a new school. The only means that we have of saving anything is by paying down our debt more quickly and efficiently and effectively in order to leave more funds available like we have now. So when people say, well, why don't y'all just save for it? This is how we save for it. This is the only mechanism that we have to save for it. Is that, is that a fair enough statement?
Absolutely, yes, sir. It is very, yes, very well said. Bonds act very similar to mortgages. So throughout the year, BISD has been making principal payments towards our outstanding debt. So as you know, anytime you make a principal payment, you avoid hundreds and thousands of dollars in interest. So that savings alone created the capacity for us to be able to pay off some bonds earlier than anticipated. So yes, that, that is actually what brings us the capacity that we have.
Thank you.
One clarification I wanna make is, is that I, there's no way we could, again, do what we need to do with, as you said, the maintenance and operation fund. But it's maybe technically possible, but with the, the what, the rules that we're under under school finance now makes it, makes it virtually impossible to say, well, we're just gonna try to save money in MNO. And it's not like it's illegal to build something out of MNO, but if we did that, we would be so far behind everybody else in terms of, of salaries and, and the things that, that were critically important to our district, is that we would be out of business in no time. So, or at least severely hampered in what we're trying to do. So, so I, I don't want anybody to nitpick this too much. I'm just wanna say that maybe the technical possibility is there, but it would be extremely a negative decision to try to say, well, we're not gonna pay the people as much as, as we need to pay them. We're gonna just pay them less and, and use that money to build something. So, so I think I'm correct when I say it's not illegal to build out of MNO, it's just that, you know, if we did, boy, we're in trouble.
It's difficult, very difficult. Yes, sir. Thank you.
And a young lady that's been up here before, that's helped us through many bond presentations and this, on bond steering, truly could probably have done the slide deck. Anyone behind us could have done the slide deck after they've seen it as many times as we did. We've asked Mr. Beesaw to come up and just share a little bit about these slides as well.
Absolutely. Hello, everybody. Good to see y'all again. So one of the things that we looked at and explored was kind of the reality that a lot of other districts are going through right now, where if they're trying to do anything that's a capital project, they've gotta add 20, 30 on top of everything. And those are really, really difficult for any district to pass because that's a direct hit to taxpayers. So for us to be able to have the kind of capacity that we do as a district, it's an extreme point of pride for a lot of people who are on our bond steering committee, as well as those in the community, because Bryan ISD has proved over and over and over again that you have the ability to be responsible financially, but also to do what's right for the students and staff of Bryan ISD. And so when we're out in the public talking about it, we wanna equate it around things like, wow, Bryan ISD's got like an 800-plus credit score. Like if you think in those terms, people are like, oh, my gosh, I'd love to be there. I wish that my interest rate wasn't, you know, 32%. So the fact that we can go out and say that we're taking care of these things and it's not going to impact that piece of the tax rate, I think is a huge, you know, thing that we should all applaud and we should all tote on our shoulders because the, the public really needs to understand that. And of course, the ballot language in 2020, when we passed the last bond of 175 million, that was a difficult thing because that was the first time after legislating. that was a difficult thing, because that was the first time after legislative session that it was required for districts to put it on there. So, I think that's a big point of the conversation that we have with the community, is like, yes, it's going to say this, however, the reality is X, Y, Z. So, I just think the district should be extremely proud of where they stand right now with that capacity that we have, and I was extremely proud of the group that came together to get us under that mark, so that we can tell people that there's no increase to the INS. Thank you.
It was fun being at her table. She was so smart.
All right, well, what is...
Yeah, table six.
Yeah. We calculated, how long do you have if we keep going? It's like another...
Approximately till 2032.
So, she can't leave till 2032. So, that's, we said done. Dr. Merrill, before I, if I may, I just want to piggyback on that again, and again, tell the public, let the public know, we're not, quote, "spending this money" because we have the ability to spend it, because we've made the capacity to spend it. These are repairs that need to be done. So, can I, that's a great lead-in, thank you. We started with strategic planning, and about three-quarters of the way through, it moved from strategic planning to bond steering. And we had a formal conversation about, "Look, we strategically are seeing that that is leading us to a bond referendum. We didn't start with that in mind, so thank you for making that point." And now it comes up, "Well, what are we recommending?" So, we've got projects, possible proposition projects. So, I'm going to let Rich, Pat, Julie, and Ms. Rayburn come on up, and they're going to talk a little bit about these projects.
All right, good evening. I'll start with transportation. I have Mr. Washington here with me, our new director of transportation. Buses, our buses, we're out, we're on a, we try to replace our buses every 15 years, and then rotate them, but that also includes our fleet of SUVs. White fleet is also our maintenance vehicles, our grounds department vehicles, and all that. And then, I'm going to let Mr. Washington speak a little bit about the technology, about the tablets and the swipe cards that we're going to be doing.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. So, yes, we are looking into getting tablets where each student will be given a card, they're able to scan on and off, and that would tell us, it would give us real-time where a kid is at, where this kid is at. So, the parent calling the school, asking, "Is my child at school?" We could tell them, "No, your child is on the bus." So, yes, that's very helpful in this day and time.
And I'll cover 1.3, 1.4, 1.5. It's about our instructional and our infrastructure. So, the classroom displays on 1.3, those are our interactive displays our teachers use in their classrooms. This would take care of that replacement cycle, as ours have been aging out. Infrastructure, the phone system, we had a five-year agreement, and it is time to renew, and that's that price tag for our Cisco phone system. And then, the infrastructure technology for our campus P A system. We have lots of areas where we can improve, especially safety-wise, on playgrounds, where maybe the sound isn't where we want it to be, as well as some older systems that need to be improved. The speaker systems need to be improved. So, and that leads right into Mr. Himmel.
Thanks, Julie. Good evening. And what Julie just mentioned about the public address systems and the speakers, particularly for the outdoor areas, that's critical to public safety on our campuses. Communication is critical. And leaning right into 1.7, that project will phase out all of the oldest cameras in our surveillance network, and replace them with brand-new 21st-century technology. Along with that comes increased storage capacity to handle all of that extra technology, and that's huge. It's huge. Thank you.
We've asked Ms. Rayburn, when we, the last meeting, we kind of had gathered consensus with the table, and then this table joined that table, and then these two tables joined these two tables, and that, her table was up here, and she led a wonderful conversation, and so that's why you got picked. That's what I told her. You said wonderful things in that group.
You merged with our table and nailed it.
And, yeah, absolutely. So, just share a little bit about why it's important to you as a community member and as a...
Hello. Um...
Can you hear me?
I said, because, I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous, because I'm a former instructor, and now I'm a parent. These things are important, because, number one, the system by cameras and everything, you need, we need these in there for telephone system, cameras. All of this would be, need to be updated, and because by you having to use your own cellphones, teachers having to use their own cellphones to communicate with the offices, to get a student to go down to the office, to tell another parent, or tell another student to go to the office, or go get another student, that's not safe. Or, I've been in the office where I've had to wait on my son to, by having the, I'm sorry, having the, having the phone system that's not working, so the secretary having to use her own cellphone, because the P A system is not working, to use her own cellphone to communicate. Those things are not, that's not safe. So, having to, needing to update all of this, this equipment is safe for not only the children that's in the community now, but for the children that's to come. By my son being, going to the ninth grade, he's going to see that he needs this now, going to the ninth grade at Bryan High. He'll be graduating in 2029. But for the upcoming students that's going, that's going to be at SFA, or at Sam Rayburn, or at any other schools, all of this needs to be updated. Or, in the buses. I've had an incident where my son was sitting on a bus, you know, and couldn't, he had to sit on the floor. But, if this was, if they had feasible situations, they would have known that he was not, he was sitting on the floor and not in an actual seat. So, if we had cameras or things that was safe, all of this could have been avoided. So, this bond here, you know, having this here to be passed would be sufficient. So, me being a parent and a former educator, this would be something that my heart is near and dear to me. So, thank you.
So, she's right, believe it or not, this was the highest-rated items when we took first vote. So, you're exactly right, near and dear to everyone's heart to make sure that it got included. So, absolutely, absolutely. So, thank you for that. What's that? Come on up.
So, Ms. Rayburn.
Yes, ma'am.
So, now that the governor has made it to where cellphones are prohibited, having the technology, security system, classroom displays, phone system, campus public address system, security cameras and monitoring systems, all at the top state-of-the-art, as parents, as a grandparent, too, I feel much more secure in knowing that my campus is state-of-the-art fitted for, with these things, knowing that if your son is needed, pretty much at the drop of a hat, they can find him and get a hold of him.
I do, too. I do, too. And not only my son, but someone else's child as well. And I feel, I feel good knowing that all of our children and grandkids are safe and secure, you know, and everybody got eyes on their kids, and know that they are safe and secure, especially with everything that's going on, you know, with guns and everything. We know that at the drop of a dime, we can put eyes on our kids if something was to go, go down, you know. All eyes are there. If something happens, we can see in the bathrooms, or, you know, in certain places in the restroom, so in the, in the, in the rooms, or in the hallways, in the buses, on the buses, outside, on the, on the grounds, you know, in the lunchrooms, all over the campuses. And everything is secure. So, yes, I feel safe and secure.
So, Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Washington, those devices we're going to have on the bus, so they're going to get on the bus and swipe?
Yes.
A lot of times, the parents always say the kid didn't get off the bus.
Right.
They didn't come home. Are they going to swipe when they get off the bus to tell us, "Yeah, Jody got off that bus at 4:00, it's 6:00," I don't, you know?
It's not my fault.
I don't worry about that.
Jody will have to swipe on and off.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Each student will have to swipe on and off of the bus. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Joel Dunsworth. I'm a teacher at Branch. Two things kind of stood out to me whenever we were looking at this, and whenever everybody was talking about it just now. Branch, I don't know if y'all have been out there, service is almost not existing in the building itself, especially in the inner building. So, the intercom system and the phone system will help with that. Also, kind of piggyback, I'm also the, I support person at the campus, and we've been working on Skyward. I'm pretty sure y'all have been briefed on Skyward, so I'm going to plug that real quick as well. So, Skyward, the way that the system will work now, so high school campuses, middle school intermediate, does not matter. If somebody can search up the student, there's an icon where actually, they click on it, it'll tell them where that student should be at that time. Therefore, that intercom system or that phone system can relay, and it can work in conjunction with. So, they can just look at the student, call on the phone at the front desk, or whatever classroom. If a teacher, if maybe a teacher got a message from the parent, "Hey, you know, Joey needs to go home." Okay, well, I'm Joey's homeroom teacher, but I can click on his information. I know what teacher to get to. That way, you don't have to go through the front office to find all the loops and things. So, with that, that's one of the big, major things, especially for Branch, there's zero service at the school itself. And so, us being able to communicate via that would be great. That way, if there's any communication lost due to service, it's non-existent because of Cisco system. As well, I wanted to touch on, what y'all already touched on with the bus, that is honestly my favorite thing out of this entire bond, and it's probably one of the cheapest things that is on the bond. But, it is honestly my favorite thing, because I cannot tell you how much hearts race, and how much blood pressure rises at 3:40, at 3:30, at 3:20, when a parent calls and says, "Hey, Joey was supposed to get on the bus. Why is he a car rider?" And/or vice versa, right? So, if he's now supposed to be a bus rider, and he's, you know, all these different cross-communication things happen, that way, we know exactly where Joey is at that time, scanning on and off the bus. And those, that's actually one of my favorite things, because running in the hallway at that time is not fun for anybody, especially if there's a student maybe sleeping somewhere, that, you know, like, "Hey, your car's outside. Well, I was supposed to be on the bus." And that way, we know where he is. So, those are the two things that I really wanted to touch on, but I also wanted to make that connection with the phone and Skyward, because it is now a new rule for the cellphones not to be at campuses. So, mom can't just text, you know, Joseph, or Suzie, or anything, and say, "Hey, I need you." They're going to have to communicate differently throughout the system. So, I think updating our phones is pertinent.
Yeah. And I'd love to say that was the only school that didn't have it. Rudder, you cannot get reception in Rudder either. So, that's a wonderful point. Our next one is our MEP, and I'm going to bring up Mr. Griffin and Ms. Bezos for this one.
So, we've discussed this several times, and this is not flashy. In fact, this is one of the few things that you don't see. These are felt. Plug for our group, they've done an amazing job. Y'all have heard me say this before, but the fact is, we do have stuff that is double its life cycle, and that is causing us to expend more money. So, we are looking to upgrade and update to help with our MNO, make it more efficient. Sustainability, as y'all have heard me say more than once, is a big deal for me. So, we are going to invest in things that will last, things that will work, and things that will carry us to the future. There's no sense in going through these, but understand we have refined some of these numbers, and part of that is because, as we talked about, the FCI, it did not make good sense to want to spend money on some of these items when the building itself is in dire need. So, the number has dropped down to a more manageable amount, because we're looking at new, instead of just putting more money into an old facility.
So, we've been very fortunate to have him leading a lot of these conversations about MEP T, because it's a very big topic, with a very big dollar figure, obviously. So, our group's really proud to be able to say that we've got these Priority 1 and Priority 2 items. They're going to give us some longevity around some of this. A lot of this as well gives us that touch point where every single campus is going to get some attention within the bond, because we have chillers, we have roofs, we've got lots of things that we need to take care of. We have an incredible maintenance staff, and the stories that they have told us as far as the work that they've had to do to kind of keep things going is pretty incredible. And so, this is a huge, you know, bonus for them as well, to be able to have new equipment, and to have this kind of attention on some of those items, because, as we all know, if you've got a really old A C, or if you've got a really old roof, the repairs just get more and more expensive as you go along and try to kind of make things work. And so, this really gives us a good opportunity to give a good footing for all of our campuses, so that we can start fresh on some things. Also, some additional, you know, accessibility requirements, and accessibility for some of our bathrooms and those types of places is really important as well, to make sure that all students are cared for and taken care of, and can access these spaces. And so, this is a very big number, but there is so much value that comes into that.
Yeah. Thank you for making that point. This really does bring every campus into focus. All right, our next group is athletics, fine arts, and CTE, and so I'd ask Rush, Justice, and Ms. Allen to come on up and talk just a little bit about this.
Good evening. First of all, what I want to highlight with student athletes, again, these are numbers I'm going to give you guys real quickly, something that you heard before. So, right now, currently in Bryan ISD, 62% of our secondary students participate in athletics at Bryan. 97% attendance rate per semester with our student athletes. 36 student athletes signed scholarships this past year. And 19 high school athletic programs between Rudder and Bryan High made it to the playoffs this year. And so, we're excited about the opportunity that these facilities will bring to our student athletes, not only to our student athletes, but to our community as well. Again, I think we had to use the word, it's a need, not a want, from that standpoint of it. And so, with that being said, going through the items real quickly, school boards, from that standpoint of it, that's a big deal in the district as far as all the school boards, or have three different brands of school boards, that we need to consolidate that to one. The batting cages are definitely needed for our baseball and softball teams. Turf baseball and softball is definitely needed. Again, we're one of the only schools in the Brazos Valley that don't have turf at this moment. Returfing the remaining football fields at Rudder, SFA, and also turfing, giving Dobbler a turf field, and also resurfacing the tracks.
Let me stop you on that one, because this is something that is out in the community, that it's like, like this is just a big add-on to what we're doing now, and you might want to briefly explain that that has been looked at, and we've looked at it as a board, because y'all presented it to us, about the fact that there's a trade-off here. In other words, there's some gain, I mean, obviously some additional cost, but at the same time, what the cost is that you're leaving, that you're going to alleviate. So, can you kind of just briefly touch on that, on these fields?
Okay. So, with the baseball and softball turf fields, you know, that's something that's definitely needed. I think it's for as the revenue that it may bring to the district as far as that's concerned, and also the cost factor, from that standpoint of it, compared to turf versus grass. I want to invite Mr. Griffin up. He did a great job of presenting that and explaining that well, very well, and carefully to the community from the possibility as far as the turf versus the grass.
Because there are a lot of people out there that want to know about that part of it.
Yes, exactly.
Coach Rush, or Mr. Griffin, can you also mention, we had a very specific example because of the inclement weather last year, that our teams could not get on the field to practice?
Yes.
And to prepare for the game, which you argued, and I agree, is a safety concern. If our kids are not conditioned, and they haven't experienced the practice, then they're not ready for play. Do you recall the numbers that you shared?
Yes, no doubt. This year, during this beginning of baseball and softball season, the first 29 days, because of the ambient weather and things of that nature, our... our baseball and softball teams weren't able to get on the field but nine times out of twenty-nine days. And so that's a, that's a disadvantage to our students, to our student athletes, when it comes to competing at a high level, uh, from that standpoint of it. So, uh, again, that's a safety issue as well, as far as our kids being able to get on the field and, and with, uh, baseball players and softball players throwing the ball and their arms getting warmed up and things of that nature. And so that causes a safety issue, uh, from that standpoint of as well.
So specifically, the, uh, correlation between turf and grass. The turf field does have a higher impact at the beginning, but once that infrastructure's put in place, and that is one due to the imperviousness of, of the turf versus grass. But then you get into a situation where you get more playing time, so you get more hours of use on a turf field versus a grass field. Due to the use of that field, it can be destroyed when it's raining, wet, so-and-so. But reality is, you start using the figures also over long-term. As we're seeing with our football field currently, we are re-turfing that field, but it is just basically the carpet. If you went by and saw it after they removed the old turf, the base and everything, the rock garden underneath it was in perfect condition, they drug it out, leveled it out, and then they put the carpet on top of it. That will be the situation after that, when the carpet or the actual turf on top has to be replaced, you won't have to dig down and replace further. Grass fields do have maintenance, they have to be cut, they have to be sprayed, they have to be sprigged, you have to change from winter grass to summer grass. There's just a lot more maintenance. So when you take the long-term and look at the hourly cost, turf fields over a period of time are cheaper, with the understanding that we don't have the manpower to be dedicated to a specific field. You have to also figure that into the cost, that person that's there every day cutting the grass and keeping it up from one corner to another. University are close, they did go back to grass fields, but they also do have dedicated staff that literally do nothing but keep that grass field up.
Well, well, thank you for explaining that, because I think that's important to a lot of folks out there. Thank you.
Yes sir.
So I'm here to tell us about fine arts and what we're doing here. Uh, seventy-seven percent of our students are involved in fine arts in Bryan ISD from kindergarten through twelfth grade. Uh, this money in particular is for our, um, looking at our band uniforms and equipment, our programs are growing. Uh, we've said it many times, but if you look at Rudder, um, ten years ago, there were thirty in the band, now we're well over a hundred. With that comes needs for equipment, uh, instruments, and also, um, our band trailers. If you've seen Bryan High's band trailer, it has seen better days, and Rutter's hasn't seen a day because they don't have a full-size band trailer. So this will, um, allow for both schools to have adequate trailers, um, that will store our, uh, equipment as well as, uh, take us into the future as we continue to grow.
I'm excited to share on behalf of CTE on two point, uh, one zero CTEC, uh, that building, there's, uh, roughly about nine and a half million dollars that's been allocated. We're working with the advisory committee to really look and see what that will be. We look forward to bringing future, uh, conversations in, but we, uh, with the expansion of MC Harris and, uh, what that's going to do, just in general, over eighty percent of our kids are in a CTE program. So it is alive and well. All of these districts of distinction awards, I'll remind everybody, we were just, uh, district of distinction for CTE. And so we don't know exactly what that will be, but we know that, um, the committee will decide, uh, and we'll put that together, but it will be a multi-use building of some sort that all kids, uh, from the high schools, middle schools would be able to use. And I'd ask Ms. Allen to come up and talk on behalf of the committee.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Good evening. Um, so when I look at this list, I'm extremely excited that it touched on so many different areas of, um, extracurriculars for our students. Um, our look at fine arts, um, especially is universally a very underfunded, um, program across the country. And so finally putting some money into something that, um, literally starts the games off, they're on the sidelines, they're, um, the heart and soul of our athletic programs. Um, the turf fields, um, when you look at those numbers, you think, why are we spending so much money for a sport that runs from August through November? Um, but the reality is, it's not just the football team that's using that. We have the band, we have the drill team, the cheerleaders, um, the middle schools are using that facility, the soccer teams, there's elementary track meets there. Um, I, as a real term, always looking at how can we bring in money to the district. And I think that we're always, I'm traveling to all these other places for tournaments and games. Um, I think Bryan ISD really has the opportunity to be a hub, um, to be able to host tournaments and games in our own facilities, but in order to do that, we have to have facilities worth advertising, um, for people to come. Um, so I think, um, it was super surprising to me that the baseball team, um, because of the fieldhouse conditions changes and their cars. Um, and so I think about a baseball player getting ready for a game, changing in their car, it's not what we want for our team and visiting teams to experience. Um, and then CTE, um, as a community, we're bringing in so many different businesses to Bryan College Station that are gonna need to be able to employ our own students. So being able to have local kids that can be trained here and employed here, um, is such an opportunity. And so we really have got to spend the money to be able to, um, accept more kids, cause as we found out, so many kids are being turned away from programs, cause there's just not the space. So, um, such an exciting thing for me just to see, um, so much thought put into the committee for serving so many different areas.
And Ms. Allen, how many children do you have in the district?
Um, so I have nine children total, two that have graduated from Bryan High, five that are currently in the district, and one that I'm really trying to sneak in early, so.
They've been in all of those programs, to say the least.
She has a real vested interest.
Before we move on on this one, you're mentioning about, the Brazos Valley already is a hub for sports. People are already coming in, not just from the state, but nationally. I get calls from my coworkers from Arkansas and from New York, hey, we're coming to College Station, we're coming to Bryan. Here's the other thing that this is, for people who say, well, I don't have a kid in Bryan ISD. Bryan ISD is sometimes the front door, the only door that people get to see when they come into the community, and they're making decisions, am I gonna put my business in this town? And they're gonna see it by, what does the football field look like? They're gonna see it by, there was just a basketball tournament. What does the restrooms look like when they walk into a gym? So this isn't all the great things about the kids and what it's gonna mean for them, but this is also, there are business decisions being made for hundreds, potentially thousands of jobs, based on what do the facilities look like in Bryan ISD. So it's important, not just for our kids, but also for potentially millions, billions of dollars worth of business that's gonna come into this community.
Amen, thank you for saying that. That CTEC building, it'll be interesting to see what grows into with all the feedback that we get, uh, the concessions, uh, fieldhouse renovations. Again, looking at softball, baseball, really setting them up to have some unique spaces is exciting. All right, the next one is the Bryan High renovation, so I'd ask Mr. Bohice, uh, Jacob Justice, and Ms. Allen to come back up and talk just a little bit about these. Yes ma'am? You, yes ma'am. This is the way the committee went, just so you know. There were moments when I was like, I don't know that we're gonna get through this, and we're still gonna be friends, but we definitely are, uh, and that's what family does. Yes ma'am.
I just wanna say something about the, um, athletics. Um, my son, he is a student athlete, and, um, I'm anticipating him getting on the field at, um, the new field. He's anticipating. We moved down here, uh, five years ago from Mississippi, from the Gulf Coast. And, um, I've never been on, never seen the inside of the stadium, so I'm anticipating seeing the inside of this new, um, stadium myself. Um, and he, and he is doing the conditioning right now at, um, over there at the, um, the, the training and everything. So he is, they all love him, are peeking and, you know, taking pictures, trying to see how it's looking and, and what have you. So, and we have been here, um, and I have seen him transition from Henderson to San Rayburn to SFA, and now we are going to, um, Bryan High. And so, and me being a mama bear, me being an advocate and, and for my son, and I ha- and he's a student athlete, and he is an honor student, he's SFA, he, he is a, uh, you know, I, like I say, I advocate for him. So I, I'm waiting to see how all of this gonna come together and, you know, and to know that all of us have had our hands on seeing this, not only for the children that's he, that's coming, but for the children to go after my son is gone, you know, and to see how all of these children, all of the people behind my son after he's gone, and making my grandkids to know that they will have their children and their kids, uh, to walk on these fields, play on these fields, walk through these doors, and get a chance to, you know, endure and, you know, have a piece of all of this that I can say that I had, you know, part of making come true, you know? And I, I'm just excited about the work that all of, all of these people, all of us, you know, had a chance to, you know, work with and do. And, I mean, because I never got a chance to meet none of these, you know, these fine people until I came here. And, but I'm excited, and I'm just, you know, ecstatic about this work.
And I think we're gonna put you on every committee.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yes ma'am.
But thank you.
Absolutely. Bryan High, if you'll come up, Mr. Bohice, uh, Jacob, and then Allen.
Good evening, members of the board and superintendent of care. Um, I had a unique opportunity to come in and be a part of this committee. And so having a set of eyes that's coming from outside the district, um, came in with the notion of there was some needs that this campus had. Um, I don't think there's been a day that I've been on campus that I have not walked that building to try to find ways to repurpose what we have. And we've done quite a bit since we've been there. Um, but we've reached a point where we can't repurpose anymore. Uh, we've reached our maximum capacity. And so when I see, uh, things like the kitchen expansion, when I first came in, I'm like, where do all the kids go? Like, this is just one? And we realized that there was a need there, um, for safety, security, and then just general housing of our students for productivity. Um, the renovations and some of the items that we'll talk about here, um, it's just one of those things that it is an award-winning campus, and we wanna keep it that way. And so, uh, it's a campus where our students are proud, it's a proud community, and I think that the work that has gone into building Bryan High School to what it is, um, is because the people that are devoted to seeing this become one of the best districts in the state of Texas. And so when I see notions of expansion and renovation, um, it truly is because there's a need. I mean, do we want it? Yes. But we also need it as well. So, thank you.
Our programs are growing. I've said it many times and I'll keep saying it. Uh, Bryan High is no exception. Uh, one of the great things with Dr. Bohice coming in was, uh, he recognizes that, and so he was helping us find solutions, um, so that some of these numbers that we originally had were much larger, um, but because he found other spaces like for Mariachi and our drill team space, now we're looking at renovation instead of building. Another point that did take some discussion, uh, was a auditorium building addition for Bryan High School. Uh, but I'm, I'm thankful for that discussion because the committee all got to speak into it, and we got to really think through what this would look like. And so, um, now we have in here an auditorium that would be for Bryan High School, um, and Rutter High School would have their auditorium, Bryan High School would have their auditorium, and it's gonna be another, it's another front door for our community. Um, just like athletics, the, the two largest things that people are gonna come to a school for typically their athletic facilities or their auditoriums. And so Bryan High is overdue to have an adequate auditorium for that school.
Mr. Justice, real quick, I have something to, this won't take long, but back to the band trailer for Bryan High. Both of my, I, I go to a dentist and there's several dentists there, and they're both, both dentists are Bryan High band boosters. And so, I don't know, a couple of years ago, didn't, one of them had a cut on his arm, and I said, where'd you get that bobo? And he said, well, the Bryan High trailer's in my driveway and I've been working on the trailer. So, I don't know, next time I went, six months later, I had the other guy. And, and I do know their names, but I'm not gonna say their names just cause I didn't ask them about this. Anyway, and so, so, um, I said, well, Doctor someone so, I've been working on the trailer. He goes, no, it's in my yard now. And so that Bryan High band was being, I mean, the band trailer was being passed around, uh, by dentists that could afford to work on.
Yes, and that speaks one of our amazing community. There is grit in Bryan ISD, there are people that are willing to work, and we're gonna make exceptional things happen with whatever you give us. Um, and so hopefully, our new trailer will put smiles on dentists' faces and not cuts on their arms.
Good one. So the original list for Bryan High School was a little bit overwhelming when we first looked at it, and after really hearing from, um, incoming principal and the meetings that were done, um, I was really interested and excited to see the fact that the items picked are things that are helping with the growth of students. Um, you know, when I think about safety and security on another topic, I like to think that our district can get to a place where we're only protecting ourselves from the outside. We're never protecting ourselves from the inside. Our students are so involved, um, in all of these different things that they're too busy to get into trouble. And I think with Bryan High, that really, I look at every, the Mariachi, the drill team, the athletic space, the CTEC space, and if you don't use any of those things, you're eating for sure in the cafeteria, um, as a student. So every student is, uh, is, is touched by this, which is, um, which is great. And so I'm excited to see, um, I know we have a little shining star from Rutter, um, that's a performer here, and having that space at Bryan High, I have a student that I would love to take in his footsteps to do that at Bryan High as well, and, um, just the able, the ability to grow and, and grow this from the elementary up and have places where our kids can thrive.
All right, Rutter High School, I'd like to invite up Ms. Layton, uh, Jacob Justice, who else do we have? Uh, Jen Hudson, and then we've Jade Robinson.
All right, thank you. So I was excited to go through this bond and to be able to talk about a few big projects that are needed at Rutter. As we all know, um, Rutter has kinda been changed since its beginning, what it was created for to be more of a three-A school. And so we've grown to five-A, which we love, and so right now, I think we're sitting close to seventeen hundred students. Um, and so we were able to get the classrooms, which has helped greatly as far as alleviate crowding and floating teachers and all the things. But as we look at the new CTE lab space, that's gonna be used for barbering and cosmetology, and what we are excited about is these are in three portable buildings right now at Rutter High School. So this will allow them to be all inside a building together, and we're gonna do a big open concept so that the teachers and students can collaborate because so many of the skills and classes overlap. And so instead of them being in individual rooms where they cannot help each other and teach different skills that the teachers are stronger with, and so this is gonna be a big open concept lab with two classrooms, I believe, and so that they can all work together. So we think that will help our students get certified and gain the hours they need for those certifications. The competition gym, uh, we just, I mean, I think it's a need for some parts of safety as far as in the games. It's hard when all the teams, all the crowd, they all enter into the lobby at halftime after the game. And so, uh, we just wanna make sure that we can keep everybody separated and, uh, safe, as you know, especially in basketball, sometimes people are a little intense. So, but this will be able to get us a gym that can also hold our student body for things like pep rallies and games and things that we do, because currently, uh, we cannot fit the whole, uh, student body in for a pep rally and things like that. And then it'll allow us to have a third gym where we have color guard, rangers, and all the groups that really need a gym to be able to practice in. So then also, we're gonna be able to renovate and increase the size of the dance hall as the size of the rangers are growing, and then, uh, be able to get a new band hall. And so we're excited about that. I think everyone says a lot, and we'll be, keep being proud of it. Our band program is growing, kids want to be in it, uh, and so that is always a great thing when you can offer another program for kids to be in. And this will also allow then our Mariachi group to be able to have a space once they build the new band hall, because right now, the Mariachi kinda floats around between orchestra and the band hall for practicing. And so we are just excited to be able to get the spaces that our kids need to continue to be successful and grow.
As always, Rachel's so well spoken, we don't need to say anything, but we would like the committee members to talk. And I'd point out, y'all know Jade is a graduate, he's been in here a few times. Uh, Jade, how many meetings did you make?
All of them.
All of them. Yeah, he made every one of them. He made every one of them, including tonight. And so, um, he's been an ambassador, uh, your mom, we're just so very proud of him.
Ambassador, uh, box core, basketball, leadership on steroids, top ten graduate, you, you name it. An incredible kid, incredible kid.
He will be missed, uh, he will definitely be missed. I will, uh, get to hopefully keep in touch, no doubt.
He'll be at U of H. Yeah. He'll be at U of H, so we'll be cheering from afar.
And then he was active in the group, and so we wanted to bring him.
Very, very active. And his mom's a counselor at Soul Ross, so they're all in for Bryan ISD. And we, we loved having Jade because you have to have the voice of the student in this process. So thank you again.
Thank you all for the comments and things like that. Good evening to the board and to my teammates that are standing behind me. Basically, back off of what Ms. Layton said, because she said it perfectly, in my opinion. The last basis, necessity. The new competition gym, a big necessity, because the gym is literally too small to use. Like, there's people standing right next to where we're playing it, right next to where the other teams are playing it, whether it's volleyball, basketball, whatever sport it is. So having a new gym would really allow us to have more safety, allow us to play more freely, and not have to worry about whether we're going to run into somebody on the sidelines or things like that, and just give our school a way better reputation than what it has now. Because our school is a lot better than what some people say it is. But this would just allow us to just prove how much better we are. So the renovation of the dance hall and the band hall, I can say personally, from using both from box core, having choreography practice in the dance hall, using the mirrors to each other, having to squish together our choreography, because, you know, we move a lot. So having that dance hall is good, but it could be better. It's always could be better. And this would make it extremely better, almost perfect. So not even just required, just like you said, rangersets and things like that, giving them enough space to be able to practice, not have to go out to the field every day. It rains a lot. It's Texas. It's bipolar weathers. You never know what's going to happen. So, you know, just having that space where they can practice inside or outside and have the choice of any day what they want to do, which is really help our school improve. And the band hall as well, the band is expanding every day. Like, there's people that I know that aren't even in band are talking about joining band. There's people that are in band talking about trying to learn how to play instruments just to go to football games and be in band. So it's just things like that. And just having the student perspective of being able to see these things happen that teachers might not see because they're in class all day, will just show you how much our school can be improved. And I believe with these improvements, our school would really improve.
Pastor Jen has really adopted the campus and adopted a lot of people, to be completely honest, but really plugged in with their new location. And so we'd love to hear your words.
Well, good evening. Thanks for letting me share, and I will keep this brief. But I am a pastor, I have a pastor right next to Rutter High School, and I just have to say that it has just been a true blessing to be able to go and cheer on the baseball team or attend a baseball game and just love on our teachers by, you know, stocking their, their snack rooms with snacks and drinks and things like that. And I'm going to say, more importantly, I'm a parent of two littles who attend an elementary school in this year, SFA, the middle school. And as a parent, I absolutely love Bryan ISD because it is the teachers and the staff and the administrators who are growing not only my children, but many mamas and proud fathers and grandparents and grandparents. And they are instilling in them not only reading, writing, and arithmetic, but they are building our future leaders in our community. So our future pastors and teachers and police officers and firemen and doctors and lawyers and city officials. And so Bryan ISD, we have a responsibility to not only this generation of students who are coming through, but our future generations who are coming through. And I am very supportive of this bond process and also very supportive of Rutter High School. My children, they are not zoned to go to Rutter High School. They are zoned to go to, to Bryan High if, if Lord willing and, and all the stars align. But why Rutter? Because whether you're at Bryan or Collegiate or Bryan High or any of the schools in Bryan ISD, every child deserves to have an equal opportunity and space to grow and thrive. And that is why I am so supportive of Rutter. And they are our next door neighbors, and we are going to be there this fall and winter and spring cheering them on. And so I just want to give a special thank you to each of you and to Rutter's principal and leaders. And that is all.
All right. The one that just took on a life of its own is Bryan Collegiate. And let me tell you just a little bit as I invite Dr. Caperton up and Tommy Roberts, if it wouldn't mind. This one started off, we noticed, the committee said, hey, strategic planning in that phase, what's the FCI, Facility Condition Index of this building? And that number gives you some inclination on whether or not you need to maybe do something else with it, like the amount of money that you're putting into it compared to a new build. And that was 59%. And at 59, that number 59, that would basically could trigger a new build, right? So they, all the things. And it was millions and millions and millions of dollars that we were going to pump in to Bryan Collegiate as far as new roof, new ceiling, all of the things that were there. But you would still drive by, and it would still look really basically the same. And out of that, the committee just kept saying, why are we not considering a rebuild? Why are we not considering a rebuild? And so we considered it. And we had it come in, we had them come in, talk about it. We met multiple times, looked at programming, what do they do in the building, really got a hard number to bring it. And that's what you see here is a Bryan Collegiate High School rebuild. And I'll let Desiree, Dr. Caperton, and Tommy, if at all, talk a little bit about why this is important and what you think this would mean for the community. And I can tell you, one of the meetings, and I kind of joked about, you know, the family and, and the structure of the meetings, there was one meeting, I mean, I just thought this has gotten completely derailed. Like, you kind of anticipate the way it's going to go, and you're thinking you're coming to consensus, and then it just got, I mean, it just went off the rails. And I'm just standing there like, here we go. It's off the rails, and I'm not getting it back. Like, and, and you sort of just go with it. And there's, if you have the right perspective on it, which eventually I got, it's like, this is happening for a reason. This is happening for a purpose. And let's figure out what that purpose is and how we come back to it. Because there were some things that we all felt really strongly about, and one of it was keeping under the 400, so we needed to figure out how to do that. And so anyway, we're proud. So if you want to talk about that.
So, I'm not on this committee, but y'all are doing a fabulous job. Because when I got the call from Dr. Merrill about a new building, I was like, heck yeah, let's do this. Very exciting. I will say, kind of piggybacking off of what Mr. Griffiths said, we are one of those campuses that Bryan ISD is investing more and more and more money in because of the roof, because of HVAC, because of plumbing and pipes and all of the electrical things. So to get a new building is very exciting, because you guys know we're right off Villa Maria. So people are seeing our building. And so to have something to showcase the fact that we are a nationally ranked school, and to have the three wings together where it will also be a safer campus is something that we're really looking forward to, and I think can really showcase to the community what we're about. So we're very excited. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I'll just piggyback for just a moment. You know, one of the, the very first thing that caught my attention during one of the early meetings was when Mr. Griffin said, you know, we'll spend 30 something million dollars. And then, so what's it going to look like? And he said, well, you're going to drive down Villa Maria, and it will look like that, like it does right now. But, you know, this, this opportunity lends itself to continue to market Bryan ISD and to continue to draw family and kids in to our district to showcase something that's really special and really unique, because we are the only one in the Brazos Valley. We're the only early college and high school in the Brazos Valley. So a good, long-term investment, in my opinion.
And we're cheaper than Bryan High's renovations.
Not that we're counting.
Very exciting.
Would you, Dr. Caperton, will you remind us, how many consecutive years has Bryan Collegiate High School been in U.S. News and World Report as a top performing high school in all of the United States of America, not just Brazos Valley, the, the U.S.? Is it nine consecutive years?
We're over 10 at this point.
Eleven, maybe?
I want to say 11 or 12.
I don't have my notes in front of me.
And we're starting to make our name for ourselves in avid. So we had the National Avid Teacher of the Year a couple of years ago. We've just gotten into the top three avid site teams in the nation. So we're definitely doing some good things that we're very proud of.
Yeah. In this building, just to point out some nuances to it, it, it would hold 550. The core would be able to hold 700. So if we wanted to come back and expand it, we could to increase the capacity by adding classrooms down the line. We felt that was important because we do think that we have an incredible campus that we want to market.
100% college acceptance rate coming out of Bryan Collegiate High School.
So, Dr. Merrill, I'm sorry, so we're going to 700, but we do have the ability to grow?
Yeah. Where it's 550 right now is our current capacity, and that's what this building's programmed out. But the, the core would be 700. So like the cafeteria, the hallways, any of those spaces, that would be very difficult to go back. So right now, it definitely is sufficient for our needs, including the gym is for core capacity of 700.
And, and we shaved off the original asking price. So it's not like we're just going down on capacity. We've gone down on price to make.
We've gone down on price. That's right.
Great. Well, thank you all for all your hard work on that.
Absolutely.
So the, people don't realize Bryan ISD has owned this land for 68 years. So this property has been a part of our district and is one of the oldest, I mean, not the oldest, but one of the oldest and most, you know, profound in the location. So we certainly would never want to get rid of it. We just want to make it better. And what a great place for Bryan Collegiate, our number one gold star, you know, national performing. And I think it's about time, you know, you've been top performing for over 10 years, over a decade or a decade. And I think we need to, again, start spreading that word because we think a lot of people understand and know. But one of the reasons we want to do this is because of how outstanding this program is. And so along with a new building, I think it's time that we get some more marketing out there about how great this program is, because it will help the community understand why you deserve this beautiful, beautiful new building. And, you know, it, one of the most prestigious on Villa Maria, a piece of property, like I said, that we've owned 68 years.
Two things. Number one, they often think it's a charter school. It's not a charter school. It's Bryan ISD. And the other thing is, we presented at the city the other day, and they became very, very excited about like something new going into that area and just the attraction and what it would do to the central location of Bryan in general. And so if you wanted to share a few words as well?
So I had an opportunity, starting in 2018, to work with the students at Collegiate when we started Hope's Locker. And the, the core group of students that, that go through those programs are exceptional. They're genuine servant leaders just out the gate. They're infused with this energy to serve the community, serve their fellow students. And I feel strongly that with this project and giving them a brand new building and taking it to the max here with what we're able to do for them, it really sends a message home to them that you're important in Bryan ISD. You may not have some of the things that some of the other schools have because of how you're structured, but you're extremely important. We're very proud of you, and we want to show you that we want this program to continue forward in this historic spot, as, as Ms. Ruthie said. And we want to also preserve a lot of that history, too, because there's a lot of conversation around the history of that building. And oh, my gosh, if you rip it down, what's going to happen? But we want to drive home for those students and the teachers that it's an extremely important program that we're willing to invest time and money and, and energy into because we want them to feel that support and to make sure that the longevity of that program and the longevity of the incredible work they're doing is, is a reality for the future.
All right. Our next project is the Merrill Green Stadium, and I'll ask Rush, Alan, and I think he's not here. Doyle Gray was on his way, but I, I don't, he was coming in from out of town, but he won't be here. Go ahead.
Again, we're definitely excited about these potential projects here. When you look at the Merrill Green Video Board and Sound System there at Merrill Green Stadium, originally when the video board was purchased, it was purchased from a company out of Ohio. And that company no longer exists, but one of our IT people branched off, and he does continue to do, does work with video boards. And so when the video board breaks down or things of that nature, we have to fly this guy in to fix the video board from that standpoint. So we're definitely, video board is definitely needed, and the sound system there at Merrill Green Stadium definitely need to be upgraded as well from that standpoint of things. So when you look at the Merrill Green Field House, when it was originally built in 1972, I was born in 1973.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I have a problem with that.
Well, again, it's, it's definitely have, did a great job of, of reaching this capacity as far as lifespan, as far as serving the, the need of the school district and the student athletes. And, but we're, we're definitely in dire need of a new field house when it comes to meeting the needs of our student athletes, not only our students and athletes, but our fine arts and, and our middle school athletes and, and our community as well from that standpoint of things. And so, again, when Rutter was built, the Merrill Green Field House became a district facility. And so that's kind of a unique situation from that standpoint of things. So when you look at the Merrill Green Field House, it houses Bryan High athletes, but also Rutter athletes come over as well, and also our middle school athletes. And so, for example, during football season, Rutter Voishley Football Team comes over and dresses in the Bryan High JV locker room. And so that has been a, a, a issue. And so that's something that hopefully we can address and, and get their, make them have field at home, and also provide them their own field, their own locker room when they come to Merrill Green Stadium from that standpoint of things. Another thing I want to touch on before Kathy comes up is for, I, I keep harping on this for bringing in revenue and, and good things for the, for the district and also for the city. This past year, we had like six or seven football programs and soccer programs call. They wanted to come play because we're at midpoint in, in, for a lot of districts in the Houston area and Dallas area and Austin area. And, and once they found out that's towards our facilities and, and, are not upgraded, as far as the locker room is not big enough for most 5A and 6A programs, they want, because when those teams get deep in the playoffs, they want to come bring, bring their kids to nice things from that standpoint of it. So that's another big thing. But the main thing is for the field house's concern is for meeting the needs of our student athletes and our community when it comes to that.
Yeah. And this has been adjusted. The numbers here, we really took a hard look at and drilled down into exactly the space that was needed. A lot of these were dominos in the sense that this locker room space will free up space, space in the building for cheerleaders, for drill team. Like, it, it really became a domino that we've talked about in the past. But this number started substantially higher. And through the work of the board, through the work of Derek and our other partners, this number came down without compromising the integrity of what we felt like we needed. Mr. Griffin kept saying, if we can't do it right, we don't need to do it at all. He kept reminding us of that. We want to be proud of it, and at the same time, we don't want to waste money, but we, we want sustainability. And so I do think that this has been accomplished with that. We looked very hard at the numbers, those coming up, to make sure we had enough square footage in the lockers, all the different locker rooms, while at the same time having a meeting space, big enough that we could host events such as banquets and those types of things. And so it'll be a beautiful space, no doubt, and it's sufficient for what we needed to be.
One of the things I want to add on that is for, we like I said, we went back and revisited the field house and the space and the footage and everything. Initially, we wanted to provide a, a locker room space for our visiting team. And so we decided that, no, we're not in the, in the business of pleasing our visitors when it comes to Merrill Green Stadium. So they would be able to dress in the JV locker room, the track locker room. And so, again, that, that cut down on space, and so the cost went down from that standpoint of things. And so, again.
While Ms. Ellen walks up, we also are excited about that flexible space that could be one large room, or two, or three, or four smaller rooms, because we do not have enough space in our district for professional development, learning, training, et cetera. So not only will the athletics department use it, teachers and staff all across the district will use it as another meeting space.
So when you look at a field house, if you're not someone who's been in it, it would just look like something that's at the end of a football stadium that holds the scoreboard up. So I did a lot of research into what is a field house. I would call myself an expert in facilities of athletics. I tried to total up how many games I've visited in six years with one child in athletics. And I think I have visited about 100 away games for just that one child. So I've seen a lot of facilities, following him through his recruiting process with tech. We've seen other facilities across the state and across the country. And it makes you realize, when you look at our facilities, they're really at a 2 to 3A level. And we have 5 and 6A schools. You think about our kids having to level up to that 6A and 5A with heart and with drive, and they need the facilities to match it. So what is in a field house? So current weight rooms and training areas are outdated. They're undersized for the level of participation. Coach Rush has put in amazing people who are taking our involvement in athletics to just an unprecedented rate that I've ever seen. When Tyson When Tyson was there, they were struggling to get teams together, and now they're having to create extra teams. It's great to see kids on the sideline because we have so many kids wanting to participate in athletics. That field house doesn't only house football, it houses boys' track, boys' cross-country, girls' soccer, girls' cross-country, girls' track, softball, student trainers. With this addition, we'd actually be able to add water polo, swim, golf, and boys' soccer. So, just expanding who all uses that. Second thing it's used for is recruiting. We have college coaches who come, and they're not coming to the school, they're coming to the field house to meet with the coaches. And so, it is, like it's been mentioned, for another front door into our community. When they're coming in that space, we want it to make an impression and open doors for our students. I would like to see the, this could be you banners across Merrill Green, just full of other kids on there, and I think that being able to have that space for our coaches to do better work and have places to meet and bring those coaches in. Third thing that's housed there is athletic trainers. Unfortunately, I've had to experience a severe injury by a student that ended his senior year. And being in a space so small and crowded with other injuries going on, you know, having a kid being told they're not going to be able to play the rest of their season with other people crammed in there, those student and trainers and the people who are learning how to take care of our students and go on to have careers and that, they needed a dedicated and larger space to be able to do that work as well because it's just super important. Not just about competition, it's about community. And so, having that place be a hub for team events, parent involvement, school spirit, when we're having team dinners, we can't fit in there. On average, you can have three people helping, and when we have the restaurants that want to come in and speak to the students, there's not enough room for them. So, just having a place where our kids can feel like they can spread out together before the games and have that time together, team-building events, guest speakers, things that build culture, build unity, and ultimately, build success for our students. I think that in closing, the field house is not just a building, it's a reflection of our commitment to equity, opportunity, and excellence. It's the second most expensive item, if you look at it, that's on the bond, but it is just so many different things that we need. So, I think it's time to give them tool, support, and pride they've already earned.
All right, this is just a summary of sort of the last few things, kind of broken down, just to give you, you've seen this, this is not anything new. But again, I would remind you that we wanted to stay under that 400 million. It was discussed early on, do we go above? For example, if you went a penny above 400, you could raise 30 million. The committee was very cognizant, the taxpayers were always in the room. I think Merv stood up either the first or second time and, and really said to the group, like, we need to take this really seriously, and we need to really consider this because it's not just about us, it's about everyone else. And I appreciated that perspective. And so, I showed this to say that we could have gone up. It's remarkable that one penny would have raised 30 million dollars or two penny would have given us 60. I can say that the group behind me and the group that was here, meeting all those times, really felt like they needed to get those projects under 400 million. And we're at 396 million, 911, 418 dollars. And so, that's where the projects came in. We're incredibly proud of that. That really is a consensus for, for all of the projects, and it was just very exciting. Again, I've said this, what I've entered into it in, sort of with my thoughts and where we've gone, I am incredibly proud and honored for the group and their opinions as they brought it day in and day out in making recommendations and not letting anything just sort of off the hook. They kept questioning and pushing back and asking for more information. And so, I'm very, very pleased for that. Our next steps are, we're asking for the, the board to consider maybe making, calling for an election. The last day to do that would be August the 18th, and then we would get into the voting elements, and we would obviously look at referendums and those types of things. Before we close, are there any questions for the good of the group?
Dr. Merrill, I just want, if you'll go back to the total, the 396, this is, this is where we're projected. If, if we can save money on that, we will. Is that correct? I just want to make that perfectly clear.
Yes, of course. Yes.
That was actually what I was about to, to kind of reiterate. I've been doing this a while, the first one of these I did was in 1980, so it's, it's been a long journey. These folks have put their heart and soul into asking the hard questions and refining and working and bringing out the, the passion and the desire to serve the community and our students. With that, the recommendation to the board, it's still in your hands, of course, after that, it's in the hands of the voters. Of course, after that, the work really begins. And that's when I will say, we will again call our local support group, our staff, our people here, because up to now, it's conceptual. Everything is just an idea of what we need and what we want and what we have, how do we have to get there? We had to put a price tag to it. But ultimately, we will then get into the design, the development, the full programming. And that is when we will work diligently to make sure that we are getting sustainable, cost-effective, and things that will make us all proud. As I said originally, I had no intention of coming out of retirement to do this. But I have one boy that just graduated and another one that still has two more years. But it's not even about them, because most of this work will be going on long after they're out of school. So, it's not about them, but it is about serving our community and serving our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Can I? Okay, just send them, all right. So, Rachel, Ms. Layton, I was sending you these. So, Jade, you know, we were talking about what a great student Jade was. This is the honor student, this is the honor graduate of Rutter, and here's Jade right here. Yay! So, I had these in interschool mail to you just tonight, so here, Jade.
There we go.
I know.
Thank you.
So proud of you.
Well deserved.
Well deserved.
Bron, I don't have a question. I want to, I want to thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This took a lot of work, 13 long meetings. I don't think any of the board members were at all 13 meetings.
They couldn't be.
No, but to be able to pull this off, and I know you had to deal with, before you had to deal with us, you had to deal with the staff, the administration, and the teachers, and that's not always easy because a lot of people have a lot of thoughts and doubts and questions, but you, you really held it down. You did a fantastic job. And I can speak for myself, I am very proud of the work you and the committee did because to see the community come together in the room and have those hard conversations that were, some of them embarrassing, I was like, at table six, I wanted to get under the table sometime, but, because Amy is, Amy's a beast. But everyone had the best interest of the school district and the children and the staff at the top.
Thank you.
And so, I, I want to thank you for putting all of this together and holding us down.
It was my honor. I was excited until I, first day, I, I couldn't sleep, I was so excited.
I remember that, he was bouncing off.
Yeah, and then I eventually slept for sure, needed some sleep. And there were moments when I thought, I don't know that we're going to get this in. And then, you know, everything happens for a reason, it really does. And I'm so proud of what we get to talk about. I mean, and we can't tell people how to vote, but I mean, just in talking about this, they're going to see how we feel about it and how we want to vote. And we don't have to manufacture it, it just is exciting. Like, we're going to touch every school. Every school's going to have something. Bryan Collegiate a rebuild, renovations at Bryan High, long overdue things at Rutter. You start knocking these things down, and I don't know how, I mean, you can't just get excited about it. And so, the final meeting, Joel just said, you know, we're kind of closing up, we're having a good meeting, and, and he said, can I say something? And you never know with Joel, he's kind of, he's like, yeah, I guess. And so, but he's, he just let it out tremendously, and it led to more conversations. So, we thought, hey, would you mind closing tonight's meeting for us? So, I'll, I'll give Joel that.
But before we do that, may I, may I, may I say one thing, please? I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just want to thank you all, all, again, like Felicia said, for all the hard work. But I would really also like to thank you for keeping the taxpayers in mind. Mr. Mervis, thank you. That is, always has to be at the, at the top of our, not the students are always the top, but like I said, we're a community, and that is extremely important. And I thank you all for being cognizant of that each step of the way, because we have to make sure that we don't only serve our students, but that we serve our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
So, I tend to be pretty long-winded, as Dr. Merrill stated, you never know what I'm going to say. And in the spirit of that, I actually wrote down my thoughts that I had that night into a speech, so I don't veer off too bad. So, good evening. This presentation before you today is the product of months of thoughtful work and collaboration. We have had rich discussions, and as Ms. Benford had mentioned, sometimes full agreement and sometimes filled with hard questions, all with one goal, to refine a bond proposal that truly meets the needs of our students, our staff, and our community. What we are presenting this evening is a result of that process. I believe it strikes a careful and responsible balance, respecting the 400 million dollar cap that we established, avoiding that tax increase that we've all talked about tonight, and yet still delivering the essential resources our schools need to thrive, not merely survive. And as I reflect on this journey that brought us here, all those meetings, I'm reminded of a poem that I've heard several summers for the past 16 years, Texas Voice State. It is recited at the opening meeting for our staff, serving as a charge to the leaders gathered that are there. I've come to realize it captures the very essence of what we have worked toward on this bond. The poem is called "The Bridge Builder," and I mentioned it at our last meeting, but I'm going to read it to you tonight, that way you feel the true effects of it. So, again, the poem is called "The Bridge Builder." An old man going a long highway came to an evening cold and gray, to a chasm vast and deep and wide, through which was flowing a sullen tide. The old man crossed in the twilight dim, the sullen stream had no fear for him. But he turned when safe on the other side and built a bridge to span the tide. "Old man," said a fellow pilgrim near, "you're wasting your strength with building here. Your journey will end with the ending of day. You never again will pass this way. You've crossed the chasm deep and wide, why build this bridge at evening tide?" The builder lifted his old gray head, "good friend, and the path that I have come," he said, "there followed after me today a youth whose feet must pass this way. This chasm that has been as not to me. To that fair-haired youth may a pitfall be. He too must cross in the twilight dim. Good friend, I am building this bridge for him." This poem speaks directly to the heart of what we tried to do. We built something not just for today, but for those who follow us. In our conversations, I was reminded that legacy left by those who came before us, the previous administration, the current administration, and people like Kevin Beesaw, who led our finance department with integrity and foresight, helping lay found, lay the foundation of a fiscal responsibility that we stand by today, which we've mentioned tonight. Thanks to that foundation and the tireless work in our strategic planning committee that turned into a bond steering committee, we have been able to focus squarely on the future. Many who will vote for this bond won't see a direct benefit. Some have children who have already graduated, some have high schoolers nearing the finish line, and yet they recognize this bond's lasting value to Bryan ISD, value that will strengthen our district for years to come. This proposal isn't just about attracting new students, though it will certainly help us do that. It's about serving the students we currently have now and the students that are yet to come. It's about addressing aging facilities, closing gaps in resources, and ensuring our schools remain places of pride in the community. We've talked about the front door all night tonight. There's different front doors all across the community, though. As an elementary school teacher, I see every day what investments can mean for our young learners. As a parent now, I imagine what these improvements will mean for my own son as he grows up in this district. The bond builds bridges, not just for today, but for the next generation. In closing, I leave you with the image of the old man in that poem. He knew that he would not cross that path again, but he built the bridge anyway for those who would follow. That's the spirit of servant leadership we honor tonight, we've mentioned it multiple times tonight. Through careful planning, responsible budgeting, and countless hours, I'm going to repeat that again, countless hours of discussion, we have crafted the strongest bridge that we could build. Thank you for your time, your service, and your consideration. Let's continue building a Bryan ISD that leads with the heart of a bridge builder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to, before everybody leaves, I want to thank you again and also say that it's hard to keep me from having the few last words. They won't be as long, as, as we said, they won't be as eloquent either, but, but I do want to say something that I think is very important. And it's going to be short. We can never be sure what one person's needs are versus another, what other person would call a want. That's, that's kind of a difficult argument to make, that, well, we, we absolutely need all this. Some of it is, we know it's valuable and we want it because it's going to be, make us a better district. And so, the, the, the main point I want to get to is, is your job, if we call the bond, is not to wait till the election and then vote. You're going to have to do a whole lot more if this is going to work, not just you, but a lot of people that you might recruit, and because we can't, as a district, do a whole lot as far as advocating, particularly the, the employees, the superintendent on down, just simply can't do it, it's not legal. If you haven't been paying attention, there's been a lot of effort put into disparaging public schools. And, and we, we know the value of Bryan Public Schools. I'm preaching to the choir, y'all know the, the value of Bryan Public Schools. We're not trying to convince, we can't convince everybody that public schools everywhere are equally good. I think there's some real problems in some public schools. And unfortunately, some of those, some of that gets pushed over into, into us and say, well, y'all are all the same, and we're not, we're not all the same. I think most public schools are good, but the reality is, is they're not all equally good. We think and we know and we see that we are great. So, y'all got a real tough job. We need you to go out there, if this is called, which is almost a certainty, I would say, and, 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 and get out there and make sure people know how valuable and how wonderful the, the people in our schools are, that they are working hard, not just teachers either, counselors, our administrative staff is working very, very hard. A lot of the public absolutely doesn't know that or doesn't believe that. And they are going to vote against this bond if they're not convinced otherwise. At best, we, they stay home, I mean, some, for some of these people, but, and they don't vote, but, but we want them to vote for this and not say, what are you talking about? I'm not about to vote for a bond that taxpayers are going to have to repay, no matter how you look at it, terms of tax rate, because public schools are, are not what, are what we need anymore. We need more vouchers, we need more whatever. So, so that's my speech. Maybe it was longer than I thought it was going to be, but I, I, y'all have, your job is not done. So, so I know you're tired, I know you've put a lot of time into this, but your job is not done. So, so please, please take that to heart and, and figure out a way, I, I mean, I'm pretty sure that some of you have already committed to that, I know some of you have already done it in the past about advocating then for the bond, because you are our best cheerleaders at this point, way better than school board members, way better than the superintendent anyway, because it's like, oh, well, sure, they're going to say, you got to have it, but we need you people to say that, and, and get your friends and family to say it. So, so that's into my speech, please do that, because if you don't, we might not get it passed, so thank you.
I think, Mr. Sazny, after hearing and seeing the support tonight, I, I think they're all thinking right now, challenge accepted. Our kids are counting on us, and it's all worth it.
Thank you.
So, Jade, you have to come home and vote for, you have to come home from U of H and vote, all right, in November? Okay.
Thank you all very much again.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to move to public comment on agenda or non-agenda items. Citizens may make comments about topics relevant to district business.
If I could picture their.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Dr. Evarah, as Mr. Sazny is about to talk about public comment, did we have any submissions?
Jade, Jade is one of my favorites.
Oh, I'm glad.
She's student ambassador.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, great kid. He, he's in boxing. He has a solo pretty much.
Citizens may make comments about topics relevant to district business. Topics should be limited to three minutes. Comments concerning specific student or personnel will be held in closed session. I'm told we do not have any tonight, but that's important that I read that so that for future reference, you are aware that, yes, the public can comment at our meetings. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Item 9B is going to be removed from the consent agenda. The annual audit will include this information at a later date, so if any other item would like to be removed for separate discussion or consideration, please do so at this time.
Mr. Sazny, I move approval of all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez didn't leave much time for moving one, but if nobody wants to remove one, and I think Mr. Bryan is not here, but we still got enough folks here, so I guess we could wait on him, but.
He ran to the restroom.
Yeah, okay. So I don't expect that he has anything that he would like to remove, so I guess we can ask him when he comes back, but does anybody want to second that motion?
I did.
Okay, all right. So the motion is made by Mr. Gonzalez and seconded by Ms. Benford. And there he is. So did you want to move anything from the consent agenda?
No. We figured not, but we're like, we don't ask him.
Then all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. All right, it's unanimous, it passed unanimously. All right, that brings us to closed session. The Board will now convene in closed session to discuss the following items, to be allowed by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, 0791, 0821. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the Board wishes to take, a result of discussion in closed session, will occur after the meeting reconvenes in the open meeting. The time is now 7:47.
The board reconvened in open session at 8:55. No action was taken in closed session. Okay, our action item has to do with discussion and recommendation of employee compensation for the 25-26 school year. And our chief financial officer, Norma Frittle, is going to tell us a little more about that.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board members, and Superintendent Carabine. As you recall at our last board meeting, we adopted the budget and also committed to bringing back a compensation plan for your consideration and approval. Since our last meeting, we have been working diligently to create capacity within our budget by closely reviewing current positions to determine whether they truly need to be filled. This has been a difficult but necessary process as it has never, it's never popular to ask anyone. We need to find, we need to find ways to do more with less. This year's planning was also shaped by several developments, including the passage of House Bill 2, which delivered funding for new teachers with three or more years of experience. While we're grateful for this investment, it is important to note that the bill did not include adequate funding to support raises for all other essential positions that also support instruction. In just a minute, we'll walk through how the district addressed these challenges and how it's offered to prepare, prepare to offer compensation options for your consideration this evening. Despite the ongoing budget deficit, these options demonstrate that we care about our staff and we want to recognize their value. Compensation planning is an essential part of our work, not just to ensure fiscal responsibility, but to support recruitment and retention. We must offer salary and benefit packages that keep us competitive with surrounding school districts. The plan must ensure equitable treatment across all employee groups, maintain fairness within this organization, and remain competitive in the broader labor market. And of course, a compensation plan must align with a budget to ensure that we support our employees while maintaining long-term financial stability. So let's go down memory lane one more time. We have seen this slide before. So what have we done? In recent years, the district has taken thoughtful steps towards implementing targeted strategies to reduce the budget deficit. And these here are just a few examples. We've been able to reduce costs by tightening our staff processes, leveraging natural attrition, improving how we track and manage positions through the Skyward system, and combining roles where it made sense to do so. So here is the originally adopted budget from last month. As you know, with the transition to a July 1 fiscal year, we are required to adopt our budget in June. While that budget was adopted, we did not formally adopt a detailed compensation plan at that time. We are bringing that forward this evening for a formal adoption. As you can see at the bottom, the first black arrow, the original plan reflected a budget deficit of $6.7 million. Since adopting the budget, we've identified savings through staffing reductions and positions that could not be filled, bringing the revised deficit down to $1.8 million. Now, as I stated earlier, this has not been an easy task, but it's a necessary process to ensure the district's financial health. So rather than simply reducing the deficit to $1.8 million, we will apply the newly identified savings to increase compensation for our employees who truly deserve it. Now, in addition to reviewing staff reductions, we've also been examining other non-payroll expenditures as part of our effort to gradually close the budget deficit. While these reviews have always been part of our process, we are now approaching them with greater scrutiny, focusing on whether expenditures reflect a genuine need or a discretionary want. Now, these may not be large-ticket items individually, but together, they move us in the right direction. Okay, so now let's move on to discuss the details of our compensation plan being presented for your consideration this evening. This includes options B, C, and D. We'll begin the conversation by listing, listing all the elements that remain consistent across all options. I'd like to emphasize an important point. As I began this exercise, I quickly learned that if we do not provide increases for all other positions that have historically been tied to the teacher's salary scale, we begin to see equity gaps emerge, particularly between teachers and positions such as counselors. House Bill 2 has required us to increase teacher pay. And if we don't adjust pay for related positions, there will be minimal or no difference in compensation between teachers and positions that demand additional credentials, experience, and responsibilities. So let's talk through this and the price tag attached. So as I stated earlier, these are the elements that remain consistent, and you'll see them across all options. You'll see the year zero teacher increase by $1,500. You'll see the year one and two teacher increase by $2,500. Increase all other positions historically tied to the teacher's salary scale by $5,000. As I stated earlier, if we do not take this action, then you will start to see those equity gaps emerge. So House Bill 2 has kind of, you know, forced us to give that follow suit with all the positions that have historically been tied to the teacher's salary scale. You'll also see some market adjustments for select pay grades and a December supplement payment for all hourly staff of $500. Also packaged is a bus driver attendance incentive, an opportunity to earn $50 a week for having perfect attendance. Every option is also going to have that contribution to our health insurance fund so that we try to keep our health insurance fund sustainable. And one of the biggest savings that you're going to see across all options are those staffing reductions that we talked about, that $4.9 million.
Ms. Frittle, before you leave that slide, would you just remind our community that with House Bill 2, these particular positions were excluded. They, they gave us money for the teacher retention allotment that would only address three- to four-year teachers and five-plus-year teachers. So everything that you're proposing for board consideration is above and beyond what the state provided as far as an allotment.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that reminder. House Bill 2 did provide compensation for teachers with three and four years of experience of that $2,500. Now, you can see that we match that at the district's cost. We matched what House Bill 2 did for those three- and four-year teachers. So we are paying our year one and two teacher $2,500, and we're also matching House Bill 2, and we're giving that $5,000 increase to all positions that have historically been on the teacher's salary scale.
Except for teachers.
Correct.
They, they received it. We, we, I've said it before, and I think it bears repeating. Historically, when we talk about teachers, counselors, registered nurses, certified librarians, they have always been included with that. So we were quite surprised when they were excluded. Yes. Hence the reason we feel compelled to take care of them.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Well said. So now let's discuss where the plans differ. We talked about all the consistent elements across the options. So really where you're going to see that needle move is right here on this slide. So as you can see, option B offers a 3% increase to hourly staff and a 2% increase to salary staff. Option C, you can read that right up at the top, so hourly staff are at 4% and salary staff are at 2%. And then the last option there says all non-HB2 staff at 3%. Essentially what that means is hourly and salary staff at this Essentially, what that means is hourly and salary staff at this option would just receive a 3% raise across the board. So a lot of times, you do hear that, that statement, like, you know, 3% across the board. That basically means if you are not touched by House Bill Two. Option D just simply gives a blanket 3% across the board. So, and Option C, once again, that hourly staff will receive that 4%, salary staff at 2%, and then back to Option B, you'll see that 3 and that 2. One of the things I would like to point out, though, is, actually, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm going to talk through this little summary here and then point one very important thing out. So here is a summary of all options side by side and their effect on fund balance. So we basically brought everything together. You can see all the options here just kind of summarized, and the net effect on fund balance down at the bottom. I do recognize that each of these options keeps us near the original budget deficit, but please know that we are not done looking for ways to improve this. We are still reviewing staffing. We are prepared to engage TASB services if needed to help us refine our hiring practices. We'll continue to identify opportunities to carefully and thoughtfully consolidate programs where appropriate. And additionally, we do have a solid plan to educate our employees on making informed healthcare provider decisions, which ultimately results in savings for everyone. And lastly, we'll also explore opportunities to increase local revenue where appropriate.
Ms. Frittl, if I may, I just want to point out, and it's on here clearly, but if you guys have not worked so hard at getting the $5 million reduction, to do any of this would be looking at over an $11 million deficit. Is that correct? I mean, we, it, it still looks like a lot of money, and like you said, it looks like we're right back where we started.
Yes.
But the, the trade-off is, like we had to do last year, to pass a deficit budget is to take care of our employees. That's, that's who we're here for. If they're here, we can't do anything without our employees for our children. And I just wanted to point out that that's, y'all have done a lot of work to get that $5 million reduction to keep us near the deficit budget that we were at versus giving employees nothing and still having a $6 million deficit. So thank you for that work.
Thank you. So, so yes, so if you look at the options across the way there, you can see at the very top, you can see that base pay. That is consistent across the board. That's basically just base pay, what payroll costs as of right now. And there, you can see the 4.9 in vacancy reductions and non-fillable positions. We basically said, we know that we're not able to fund these positions, or they're just either not fillable, so we're just going to take them off the books. So that equated to about 4.9 million. And the cost of the consistent options, that's basically quantifying this price tag right here, that's $16.3 million that you see there. So if you put a pencil to every single one of those options, you get to that 16.3 million. And then once again, where the options really differ, that next line that says "option-specific cost," that's basically these three guys right here. So if you were to choose Option B, that would give the hourly staff 3%, the salary staff 2, and as you can see across the board there, you know, you've got the 4-2 option and then the 3% across the board. So that's what the "option-specific cost" row is really saying. So that's really, that "option-specific cost" is really the, what's going to move the options in any one direction. And our, everything non-payroll, those estimates did remain the same, so we just dropped, we just dropped those down. So really, the net impact on fund balance on our cheapest plan is about a $6.3 million deficit, followed by Option C, which would give about a 4% increase to hourly staff and 2% increase to salary staff. That deficit is right at about 6.5 million. And then the last option, doing that 3% across the board, would take our deficit to about 6.7 million.
You want to advance this slide?
Mm-hmm. I'm going to pop right back over here to the compensation options, the ones that are consistent across the board. I do want to make a couple of comments here. If you see that December payment for all hourly staff of $500, that equates to about a percent increase for all of our hourly staff. So just kind of keeping that in mind as you're reviewing through these options here. If you add that 1%, we're basically seeing hourly staff at 4% for Option B. You're seeing hourly staff at about 5% for Option C. So because we have that December supplement payment as an option for our hourly staff, we just wanted to kind of throw that out there. It is recognized separately and calculated separately from a true raise, so to speak, but it is important to note that it's still part of your salary, and you can still, I mean, some hourly people will see over a 5% raise.
One of the things that's, that it's hard for us to evaluate, I would say, unless everybody else knows a lot more than I do, is that we don't really know what the gap is necessarily between hourly and salary. And so if it was real close, in other words, the hourly people were, ended up making about the same as the low-paid salary, then that looks, that starts to look a little, a little unfair. So is there any way to even comment on that about, about where our salary people stand in terms of the lowest-paid salary versus hourly? Am I making sense? Because you're talking about possible 5% versus 2%, and that's, I know it's not really 5%, but it's kind of, like you said, sort of comes out to that. So, so are we, are we possibly shortchanging our, some of our salary people because they don't, despite the fact they get a salary, they're not really making any more money than an hourly person?
Are, are you asking if there's any, like, if any of our, what is our lowest salary versus some of our higher hourly?
It just depends on what pay grade you're in.
Yeah, Tommy-
Do you have any way to comment on that?
Tommy, do you want to come up? I think you-
You just don't want an hourly making more than salary?
Some of our departments have a-
Oh, no, 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 no.
That would never happen. Some of our departments actually have a combination of both. They, they work in different roles in the same department.
For example, our technology department.
Some are salary, some are hourly.
Yes.
So-
So that, that's not, that won't happen where we've got the, that's, I think that's what Mr. Stasny is concerned about, is if we have our hourly, our top, our top hourly making more than our bottom salary.
Something like that would only happen if you had an hourly person that's been with those for 100,000 years.
Right.
And then you have brand-new, better-salaried person.
I don't necessarily, the scenario that you're describing, I don't necessarily see happening for that, for that reason right there.
Right.
Okay.
Do you want to give a couple of examples of hourly? What, what positions would that maybe include? Just a couple of examples.
Well, we can talk through the bus driver example. For example, if, if a bus driver is receiving an equity adjustment on top of the $500 hourly payment in December, on top of the bus driver attendance incentive, that can definitely, you know, help the hourly bus driver situation. You know, it could be more than 5% in some cases. So, or even on the custodian as, as well, depending on how many years of experience that particular custodian has. So the range, really, to answer your question, it can be anywhere from 2%, 3%, depending on whether you're receiving a market adjustment or not. It could be upwards to even 8%, 9%, depending on where you're at, your position, and your years of experience.
So most, or a lot of these, I guess a lot of these salary people, whoever they are, are going to get some adjustments from the, that, the 1.6 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she, she mentioned, depending on the person and the situation, they could get a market adjustment, which is a very common practice in every district.
Correct. But the one thing to, to, to point out about all of these options is that everybody is getting something out of, out of every single one of these options here, whether-
And my, my concern, or what I look at is, if you're looking at our salary people, they're in this range, I'm sorry, our hourly people are going to be the lower range. So if you're giving them 4% versus 2% at someone at a much, much higher range, you know, I don't, it's not equitable if you're looking in terms of dollars. I understand, you know, you've got education, you've got experience, you've got responsibilities, and that's the reason that you're salaried and you get paid here anyway. But I, I would like to take a look at our hourly that are essential to our, are vital to our district and make sure that they are compensated because I think 4% would make a bigger difference to them than, it's not as, it's, they're still going to get as more, probably monetary, money-wise, dollar-wise, as a salaried employee. But I, I would like to take, I think, I like the fact that this takes into consideration the, the hourly, and I think that they deserve everything we can give them.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And it's also important to note that as long as we have, to be able to keep that alignment, every option offers that either 2% or 3% across the board, so it keeps that shift. You know, so if we don't do anything, then we stay below market. But every option here offers us to be able to get into alignment with our peers and then still offer that across-the-board percentage, whether it's 2%, 3%, 4%.
Would, would you explain what the, I don't think we've really gone into what the alignment is. Could you give a little bit of, of detail on what we're doing with the alignment to try to get everybody at the, at the same level?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. We, every option here also includes some market adjustments, what you refer to, what you'll hear as market adjustments. So if you happen to be an employee who was not being paid at market, then it is possible, depending on your years of experience, your position, and what all that entails, you will receive a market adjustment.
Which would be a raise. So there are going to be some-
Which would be a raise, yes, sir.
So the some people are going to be already above the market, so not everybody with this market adjustment, not everybody will receive an increase or a raise. Is that correct?
That is possible.
The ones that are already above are good, and we're just trying to make sure the ones that are below the, the starting line are at least brought up to, on par. Is that fair enough?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Very well said. Yes, sir. Not, not everybody will, will receive a market adjustment if you were already found to be at market, so to speak. But there, again, this, this, these options, you'll, there's something for everyone.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're, you're either going to see a 2%, a 3%, possibly 4%, depending on the option that is approved this evening.
Plus a market adjustment if you're, if it's due.
That is correct.
Thank you.
That is correct. Above and beyond. Yes, sir. Thank you for pointing that out.
It's difficult for me to, to, to choose an option here that prioritizes certain employees in such a way over others in terms of the percentages we're offering. I think every employee in our district is, is valuable, and so when I look at this, I look at Option D favorably because I feel like it gives us a chance to be more competitive as a district across the board and, and gain every inch we can in that space. It's also easier for me not to prioritize certain employees over others, and I just, I think it's, I think it's a good option for us to consider.
Could you advance it to that one so that, or-
And which one did you say, Joel?
D.
D.
And I also realize it's the biggest line item, but I've already come to grips with that number from our prior meeting, and so-
It's still less than the budget that we already approved.
It is.
Yeah.
But it never hurts to do better. And I just, you know, I like Option C personally, and like I just discussed, I, I just think, and I'm not trying to prioritize anybody. You're exactly right, Mr. Bryan. Everybody is important. Every single employee is, is important. I, you know, I, I feel like our salary staff has, their, their option, there, there's more room for bonuses and TIAA and things like that, that, that our hourly staff is not allowed to, they don't, they don't have access to. So I think we've got a lot of our hourly staff that are very hardworking, and, you know, we, we don't pay them enough. And so I think anything we can do, I would rather, I think it'd be very helpful to, to get as much funding as we could to our hourly staff, and that's why I personally would prefer Options, would, would pick Option C.
Yeah, the, the salary staff includes, oh, obviously, everybody's important, but I assume when you say salary staff, that's going to include all salary staff. That includes our highest-paid employees, correct?
All salary staff, yes.
I was trying to say hourly. I mean, that's what I meant, but yes.
Yeah, the, the salary staff includes our highest-paid employees.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Because the only thing that's not included in there is the ones that were covered by House Bill Two. So, so that's the reason that just doing 3% for everybody actually increases the total fairly significantly. So I'm struggling too. I'm struggling with wanting to do, and because one of the things that we're not going to talk about till another time is, is, you know, whether we're going to have to do more with our, you know, what are we going to be adjusting benefit, you know, the, again, we're not going to talk about that tonight, but whether we're going to have to adjust some of our, our healthcare costs as far as employees go, you know, what, what are they paying? So, and that's going to all figure into what, what's left down the road. But again, we're, we're not dealing with that tonight, but that's in the back of my mind, that, that's going to be a discussion for a later day. So this is tough. Part of me says what you, I agree with you, Leo, and I also agree that we don't really want to pick and choose who we're going to give additional compensation to, even though the dollar amount is dramatically different with regard to almost every hourly staff versus a lot of our, our salary staff that are much, much higher compensation levels. So, and these are tough times. We, we, normally, we would just be saying, well, let's give everybody the same percentage, and it's a good percentage, and we can't do that. We just can't do that, and without, digging a much bigger, digging a much deeper hole here. So I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in, because we, we need to get something done. I think we need to pick one of these or modify it in some way.
I'll weigh in. I, I agree, all of our staff are important, whether they're salaried or hourly. I really don't want to pit any staff against another staff and say one is, you know, more important than another. I wish we could get every, give everyone a more significant bump. And remind me, this, this increase is being done as a, a permanent, or this is not like we did last year with a retention stuff.
No, ma'am. This is a permanent raise to your base salary.
The other thing, if you go back to the other slide, I think it does recognize the, this one, I think it does recognize our hourly staff in a different way because it also gives them the 500 bonus in December.
That is a good point. Yes, ma'am.
So for me, if you go to the options again, I'm, I would support Option, can you go to the slide with, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, you're fine.
Right there. I would support Option D, the all, because it's HB2, it's all staff, and whether they're hourly or salary.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for pointing that out. I do want to reiterate what she just said. Coming back to this slide here, these are, these elements here are consistent across every option. So to Dr. Harland's point, our hourly staff here at this option would still receive that $500 supplement payment in December. All of our bus drivers would have the opportunity to earn that $50 a week attendance stipend. So if we-
Do you have a price, I'm sorry, do you have a price tag on that $500 for hourly staff?
Which one? I'm sorry?
How much it will cost to get the 500 times all the hourly?
Hmm.
Tommy probably can pull it up.
I don't have, on me, I have it in my bag.
While, while Tommy's pulling that up, would you mind going back to the slide that shows the three examples?
Yes, please.
And I know we've looked at everything, and we're grateful for the money from House Bill Two for our teachers, especially the five-plus years getting 5,000. Can you share with our community about what percentage? Because I don't want our teachers to think that, well, everyone else, we're looking at a 2%, 3%, 4%, et cetera, but my understanding that it's quite a bit more than the 2, 3, and 4 that we're discussing. On average, did I see 9% for the House Bill Two teacher groups?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, ma'am. If, if you do want to break it down on a percentage-wise with what House Bill Two is, is actually given, it's about 9.6% on the average teacher. So if you take that $5,000 and you do the percentage on that, it's about 9.6. So a lot of them are saying, you know, they're just, I don't know, they're rounding up, or again, it just depends on the, the years of experience that you have and where you're at on the scale. But it could be upwards of, you know, you could look at it as 5% this year, 5% next year, or you could just see it as, you know, you're getting a 10% raise upfront, so to speak.
Right. So for teachers, we are grateful. This is, this is significant for our teachers. But to the point of the board, and I think our dilemma, is it takes every single employee, all the 3,000 to serve children.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I'm proud of the work that, you know, we've done to find some way to provide compensation for all, not-
Ms. Frittl, and before I forget, would you clarify, Julie brought up a good point. So if you're looking at Option D, it says all non-HB2 staff. So does that mean that the teachers in Option C that are getting, that are getting their 2,500 or 1,500 and also getting the 2% on Option D, are they not getting anything? also getting the 2% on option D, are they not getting anything other than what they're getting from the state?
That is correct.
Okay, so that is more equitable then. So everybody that's not getting a bonus from the state would get 3%.
That is correct.
Okay, I think I kind of missed that. That, that makes a huge difference in, in looking at it, actually. I think I honestly would, would favor option D as well, quite frankly.
So you, do you have that number I was looking for?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir. So the cost, the price tag of the $500 stipend for all hourly employees is approximately $600,000.
$600,000.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And the price tag for the $50 incentive for the bus drivers, transportation staff, is 275,000.
Well, that's an unfortunate number, because if, if we tried to go up a little more on that, then it would, I was going to say, maybe go to 750, that takes us to 7 million. So that's an unfortunate number. Well, I don't know. I guess, I guess I'm not going to go down that road. So I was trying to figure a way to sweeten the pot for the hourlies a little more, just by raising that up a little bit. I guess we could go with another 100 and say 600 instead of 5, and that wouldn't be very much. Just to, because obviously, that's kind of a little bit of a compromise. We're not going to give them 4%, but we can give them a little bit more just as a part of that December, December extra amount. But I, I, I'm okay with, with the way, it sounds like that's kind of a sense that we may be leaning towards D, and, and I can certainly live with that.
May I, may I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, Ms.--
More questions?
Oh, sorry.
Right. So, okay, I just don't know if everybody understands D, because with D, the only people that are getting a raise are the people that didn't get anything from the state.
Well, that's, that's in every option. And so hourly staff and, and salary staff are the equivalent of all non-HB2 staff.
They're all non-HB staff, but the--
But it also--
D, D just separates out the, the hourly from the salary. It just says 3% for all non-HB2.
Actually, I'd say that.
So, so I thought you said that the, in D, the people that are getting something from the state are not going to get a 3% raise.
That's correct.
So the people, if you do an option C, they are getting from the state. In addition to that, our salary staff is getting 2% on top, and our hourly is getting 4%.
See, that's, that's why I didn't want to make a motion, because I think there's still--
It's a little--
--misconception.
I can, I, I can, I can recount.
Why don't you walk through B, C, and D, because it is confusing, because the first time ever in my 30-plus years, I've seen the state separate people that have historically been included with the teacher pay scale.
Before you flip back, on this one, where it says on C, salary staff, it doesn't say non-H, House Bill 2.
It's all salary. It's all salary.
Is it all salary staff, meaning that the, the, the teachers that are getting 5,000 are also getting 2%?
No, otherwise, the numbers would be huge.
No, that is what she's saying.
But I'm trying--
No.
Yeah. We did struggle a little bit with how to kind of untangle this, because to Ms. Carabine's point, the House, House Bill 2 only provided salary adjustments--
I understand.
--for teachers. So, so, so that was, that was part of, part of the challenge here. But in an effort to try and separate hourly staff from salary staff, what we mean when we say salary staff, we mean every non-teacher.
Okay.
Any non-teaching position. We already know our teachers are going to be taken care of by House Bill 2.
Okay, so salary staff does not include teachers?
That is correct.
So it doesn't include the 1,500 or the 2,500?
Right.
That is correct.
I'm sorry, in C, it's C.
In any one of these options.
Okay, because that, that's where, okay.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's fine. It just, since you didn't use the term non-HB2 salary staff, that it was a little misleading.
So we are back to where--
I understand, because that would have--
The parties represented in each option are the same. They're just separated differently in each one by percentages, correct?
That is correct.
Except for the third, D option.
In summary, in summary, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Every teacher is seeing something.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
We're, we're good. It just, that just was a little bit of a clarification, because I, I was, I think that's what you were thinking at first.
It was, and I was, yeah. Well, then, I guess I'll make a motion. I, I move approval of employee compensation, option C, as presented.
C or V?
D.
I would like C.
Okay, you want to go with C?
Yes, sir. I, when I realized, I thought it was pulling out the staff, so I still would prefer C, would back C.
No, 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 should've. My phone's still on.
Uh-oh, Siri's going on.
Siri wants to vote.
Is there a second?
If there's not, then it just dies.
Yes, so I hear no second.
No second, okay.
So do I hear any other motion?
Mr. Stasim, I, I move approval of the employee compensation recommendation for option D as presented.
Second.
All right, motion made by Ms. Harland, Dr. Harland, excuse me, and seconded by Mr. Bryan. Any further discussion? Ruthie, did you, did you have any more you wanted to comment on? Okay. All right, well, all in favor, raise your hand.
I'll vote for it.
I think we have--
Unanimous.
Are you raising your, okay, so we have, I think it's five votes, all opposed. Okay, abstaining?
No, no, I voted--
Oh, you did vote. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's--
So it's unanimous. So we, we are adopting option D. None of this means in the future we can't look back and say we can do something else if there, if circumstances allow. So we will certainly always be trying to do everything we can to be fair to our employees as best we can under--
With what we got.
--the confinement of what the state gives us. So thank you very much for all the hard work you all put into that.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll just reiterate, we remain committed to working on the reduction of the deficit budget. We're not done. We'll work on it every single week throughout this entire year to see if we can, you know, continue to reduce. Hoping for the future, we're in a biennium, so all the decisions that were made with House Bill 2, as well as everything else, remains in place for two years. So just know, know that. Funding sources, as far as revenue coming in, will not change.
Correct. Yes, we are not done. Thank you.
All right, thanks again. And we'll move on to item 12B, discussing, consider approval of school resource unit interlocal, interlocal agreement between Bryan ISD and the City of Bryan. And we have Rich Emel to present.
I was actually just gonna, I was simply going to just introduce the topic here. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Carabine. This evening, we are presenting the renewal of the MOU between Bryan ISD and the City of Bryan. This agreement reflects our ongoing partnership to provide school resource officers on our campuses, supporting the safety and security of our students, staff, and community. This agreement maintains the same staffing levels we've had over the past two years, and also applies the same cost-sharing formula. There's a small adjustment for SRO training, and the total cost of this renewal is about 4% higher than last year. This does include a 3% increase in salaries and benefits. And lastly, overtime continues to be billed separately at 100%. And I'd be happy, we'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
So is this the same amount of SROs we've always had?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Ten full-time police officers.
And I see you have the one sergeant.
Yes, ma'am.
What do they do?
He supervises the SROs, and he evaluates their job performance, takes care of scheduling.
So the increase was for their salaries, the benefits, and training. Who's responsible for that, for the training? Would that fall under us, or would that fall under?
Our share of the training expense is above and beyond their training as police officers. It's the training that's required to maintain their status as school-based law enforcement officers. It's the annual training and recertification for school resource officer and for, for training.
Has anything changed in the agreement relative to the percent that the district pays versus the city pays, or did all of that stay the same?
The cost-sharing formula from previous years, it stays the same.
I move approval of the resolution authorizing the district to entering to an interlocal cooperation agreement with the City of Bryan pertaining to the provision of school resource officers.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Walter, seconded by Dr. Harland. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12C, consider approval of revisions to board policy FNCE local student conduct regarding personal communication devices slash electronic devices.
Thank you, Mr. Stasim.
Thank you.
So this is out of the 89th legislature, so we're here this evening to review a new House bill that has passed and been signed by the governor and is currently law. It goes into effect September 1st, but school districts are kicking off the school year with it. You've probably seen the headlines. The Texas governor and the state officials have banned cellphone use by students in schools. And so in working with our policy, we have a couple of options to make. TEA has put out some information as well, but we're going to cut right to what the actual law states. So it gives a very clear definition of what is meant by a personal communication device. So it is, and we are going to read, telephone, cellphone, such as a smartphone or flip phone, tablet, smartwatch, a radio device, a paging device, and then here's the catch-all, or any other electronic device capable of telecommunication or digital communication, a laptop, for example. So anything that can fall in that. When you look at the policy, or when you look at the law, it gives provisions for school boards in particular. So to comply with this new section of law, the school board has two options: prohibiting a student from bringing one of those devices to any school property, or designating a method for storage of those devices while on school property during the school day. And you'll notice there, underneath it, there are some provisions where we, as a district, can authorize the use of a personal communication device. Number one is relative to a person, a student's IEP, receiving special education services or 504 services. Number two is from a directive from a qualified physician, for whatever that reason may be. And, and for example, I can think of one pretty easily there, perhaps for monitoring your diabetes, your sugar level. That would absolutely be a cause to utilize that cellphone to recognize those levels. And then number three, to comply with the health or safety requirement imposed by law or a part of this protocol. And that, we have not gotten much guidance from TEA on just yet, so we're holding on that one.
Well, we have a hard time asking them about their medical condition?
So that would be with a directive from a doctor, and that would be what--
Something we're entitled to ask for.
Yes. So the policy that is attached to the, the board agenda and is viewable to the public really just takes into account those provisions only. This evening is not about the consequences of violating the policy. It is only about establishing what the policy would be, could be. So to help prepare for this moment, Mrs. Carabine convened the superintendent's advisory committee of parents, and we had a nice Zoom meeting with them and got some feedback from, from the parents whose students would be directly impacted. We also worked during Administrator Institute with all of the campus-based administrators, district administrators, and then other curriculum staff across the district. Overwhelmingly, the, the feedback was, we understand the need to secure those devices, the students are focused on instruction, but we also understand the need to be able to communicate with a parent before or after school. So what you'll see there on the screen is, is what is actually drafted in this policy, and that is that student communication devices can be brought to campus but must be secured throughout the school day. And by school day, the legal definition is when the first bell rings and when the last bell rings, between those two timeframes. So that includes passing periods, that includes lunch, and of course, includes instructional time. However, students are in a number of activities after school, and oftentimes travel with teams. They may have their personal communication devices during that time to stay in contact with their families and with their parents. So the policy itself does not address anything other than either complete prohibition of bringing it on campus, or in this situation, the draft says they can be brought, but they must be stored. And storage could be in any way, shape, or form. It could be a backpack, it could be a purse. It just needs to be out of sight and out of mind during the instructional day. And with that, I'll turn over to Ms. Montoya.
All right. So with that being said, so as Dr. Ybar said, House Bill 1481, it was signed into law on June 20th, so now it will appear as a section in our student code of conduct, and we're working with campus administration, our legal counsel, and guidance from TEA as we develop the guidelines and parameters. So our goal is, of course, consistency across all of our campuses. So the timeline set, so Governor Abbott signed House Bill 1481 on June 20th, so during the month of July is usually when we make changes to our student code of conduct. And we are, during this month and with the changes to the student code of conduct, will add those changes for our school, our policy, our cellphone policy. We are here, here this evening to consider changes to the board policy in regard to cellphones and the communication devices. And as I mentioned earlier, this will be in the student code of conduct. We're communicating with students and with parents. We've already started doing that, and we will continue doing that through the beginning of August, and we are hoping that on our August 4th, the next board meeting, we will bring the student code of conduct to the board to consider for approval.
So do you need a motion right, because there's not a motion in our agenda?
That'd be mine.
It's okay. I think, I think I can handle it.
I know. I was, I said, is there supposed to be a motion here?
There is.
So what we're asking for is the board to consider approval of revisions to the board policy FNCE local, the student conduct--
I can do it while we're ready.
Personal communication devices and electronic devices.
So Barbara, it goes into effect September 1?
Right.
Technically, by, by governor's decree, yes, it does. But once the policy is adopted, it actually is in effect then. So if the board takes action this evening, it is in effect for the first day of school.
Okay.
Now, what we've talked about, and we'll share a lot more on August 4th when we come back, with the student code of conduct, and you can hear what we think are reasonable consequences for violation, we expect there to be a warning period. Kids are going to forget, they're going to reach for it, they're going to pull it out. So we will have some grace extended initially, so that we can all settle into it, because phones have become a part of our, our world. Even our teachers have embraced it. They ask them to take the phone out to do an assignment, et cetera. So we will work with our families and our students and our staff to navigate this initially. We don't want it to be terribly punitive immediately, because there will be a few mishaps. So that's very important for everyone to know.
And I, and I agree with that, but we also have to take it seriously, because if we don't, it's, it's going to be a lot of pushback, that saying, well, we, we knew we should have just said you can't take them to school at all, because y'all are not doing it right.
Well, absolutely. To, to your point, this is the law. We're asking you to approve it, so that we can declare it to our families. But, but again, we, we will come back on August 4th and, and share all this. I, I think the parents are, A, wanting to know, can they, can the kid have it at school? And the answer is yes, locked up, turned off. We don't want to see it, we don't want to hear it from bell to bell for any reason. But if you forget on that first day of school and you grab for it, we're, you know, we don't want to throw the book. But do we expect them to have it turned off, out of sight? Absolutely.
It also allows for parents, as if, if we adopt the policy this evening and get the communication out, as Mrs. Montoya was mentioning, there are going to be circumstances where a parent may do a 504 amendment or an IEP clarification that would allow devices in certain circumstances, and it gives those parents time to get that process started, so that the student has it for what they need it for, based on a physician's order or a part of their accommodations. So it buys that time to make sure we start out strong and not reactively.
So you know, Barbara, I saw a lot of comments, you know, social media--
Yes, ma'am.
--best and worst friend, and even comments from some of our staff that said, concerned about how we were going to vote as a board. But the most that I heard people saying, staff mostly, a lot of parents, if we expect that from our students, what are we going to expect from our staff? We don't want to have our staff out on the telephones all day during instructional time and the students not.
Certainly.
So I think we kind of need to lead by example.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
A little bit at, at times with that. I understand the teachers, they're adults and whatever, but if you're supposed to be doing.
If you're working, you're.
Instruction, and you're supposed to be working, then what do you need your phone for? Why are you on your phone?
Well, and my comment would be, there's a law that the governor has signed into law that applies to students and personal communication devices during the school day. I mean, we're just following the law. So he may expand it at some point, but we're addressing what we need to address.
And we'll have to be very proactive with, as faculty, with communicating with parents about schedule changes, make sure that they're aware, utilizing school district email to email the students who are in the building about any changes, so that they're informed.
And how, how will they receive the emails?
So on a district device, you can receive an email.
So, so can they not bring in their personal laptops?
They may not, sir.
Okay.
Good question. That's a very good question.
Can you speak to that?
Certainly.
Elementary, intermediate, middle school, and high school, what does that look like for laptops or Chromebooks?
Sure. So we are a one-to-one district for our secondary campuses, as well as Ms. Johnson would tell you, for our elementary campuses. So the students do have a device to use throughout the school day, and they do receive emails. We do have some protections in place. We don't allow outside entities to email students directly, but faculty can email students directly and update them on information. The law is written in a way that says, that catch-all phrase I noted earlier, all other communication devices that allow for it, a laptop would be that. And so it used to be that students could bring their own laptops, and that, there was some, some help in that.
Yeah.
That is no longer permissible under this law, so the district would have to provide the device if they were to use communication methods that were electronic.
And we do have enough to give everybody.
Yes, sir, we certainly do. With testing being online and one-to-one, we certainly do. Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. I move approval of the revisions to board policy FNCE local, student conduct, personal communication devices, electronic devices, as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Harland, seconded by Ms. Waller. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think we're done. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 9:48.
Ginger, you get these back?
Yes, if, if you're done with anything.